I'm fine with calling the meeting to order. Um, so this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is being held remotely due to the governor's emergency order. This, all members are participating remotely. And that's all that's important for now. Um, it's not on the agenda, but if we were in person, it would be customary for us to say the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of our meeting. So tonight, given that we have had a transition of power in our government, we are going to say the pledge. So, am I screen sharing right now?
You are.
Great, so if you want to rise to say the pledge of allegiance with us, you may. If you do not want to, feel free to exercise your right. Um, let me close this out, so hopefully, um, and mute, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you very much for that. Alright, so, um, we're gonna have citizens' comments first. Um, but if you're here to comment about the school choice hearing, if you could just hold that until we open that part of the meeting and then put your comment, you'll have time to give your comments there. So during public comment, um, you are asked to raise your hand, you will be recognized. You are limited to three minutes. Michelle Horrigan will give you a warning when your time is up. And at the end of your three minutes, then we'll ask you to conclude that. So if you can just keep an eye on her. When you are recognized to speak, you need to state your name and your address so that we can have that for the meeting minutes. Alright, and then when it's time for the hearing, then we'll tell you about the process for the hearing. So if you would like to speak, if you could use the raise hand in the, you know, if you click on yourself, you can raise your hand. That'll bring you to the top of our list and it makes it easy for you to see. We will allow, you know, about 10 minutes for this. If it goes beyond that, then we would ask people to come to the next meeting to speak. I'm not seeing anyone, so I will give this about a minute. Great, alright, well, it wasn't a full minute, but, alright. We would like to thank the 50 of you that are joining us tonight. And we do appreciate your attendance. So the next part of our meeting is a public hearing. So a hearing is slightly different than public comments in that you would, you need to limit your comments to the topic. The topic will be about school choice for the next school year. This year, we do participate in school choice, so it's whether or not to participate next year. In order for us to understand that, Mary Beth has worked with Principal Hovey and Principal Tracy to put together recommendations. So they'll share that first and then we'll ask the public if they want to comment on what they've heard or give statements about school choice in general. And I just wanted to let the committee know that there was some new enrollment information put in. There was a, a little, like, I said that's the way it should be, and so that's why it was added later. There was, so it is there now, it wasn't there maybe originally when you looked at it, so. Do you want to show your screen, Mary Beth, or how do you want to do that?
Let me, I'm gonna share my screen. And then this is the recommendation from our secondary principals regarding space and availability for school choice in the Hamilton-Wentham district. And then I'm, as I said, I'm gonna turn this over to Principal Hovey and Principal Tracy to talk through their recommendation.
Okay, great, I'll jump in on this. Thank you, Mary Beth. The enrollment program, school choice enrollment program has been active for a number of years. This is my eighth year in the district and it's, it's been going along for all eight years. We have a number of kids who come in from, I think, I think we're up to 13 or 14 different communities. And brings us a nice diversity of students, gives us good opportunity to share some perspectives from other communities and with other families. And we generally have been in the past few years filling seats that have been left over when we do our scheduling. So if we have 14 seats or 18 seats left over, we try and fill some of those with school choice kids. Sometimes those school choice numbers, depending on what the school committee has voted, and Craig might be able to jump in on this. Over the past few years, those numbers have been limited to certain grades during some years, whereas other years, we've included all grades 6 through 12. And that just is based on our enrollment at the time. Craig, you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, I've been here a little bit less than, less time than you have, Eric. And I think somebody can correct me, but I think we've only been doing school choice at the middle school for either three or four years now. I echo Eric's comments that it does bring a lot of benefits to our school. I think it diversifies our culture, it brings in some unique perspectives. You know, overall, I think it's been a positive. Just looking at numbers this year, however, I, I find that we're in a area of tremendous uncertainty as far as what this coming year is gonna look like, whether we will still be doing six feet of social distancing, what our enrollment's gonna look like. You know, and we've put together some of the current enrollment numbers right now. We have, what this doesn't reflect is in the middle school, we have a number of students who have either chosen homeschooling or private schooling for this year. And I don't know how many of those students would plan to re- rejoin us next year, but that would significantly increase those numbers. So, you know, the place where I've put it is that it's my recommendation that for middle school next year, that we do not open the school for our school choice just because of that degree of uncertainty. And I know that Eric has made a different recommendation at the high school level.
Yes, at the, at the high school level, we have an interesting scenario where kids will, when they transition from eighth to ninth grade, we lose anywhere from 10 to 15 kids to various private schools, some local, some in other states. So we have a transition of kids that go to the tech. We can lose anywhere from six to a dozen kids to the tech when they shift from eighth to ninth grade, depending on the seats that are available to us. We can lose kids to private school. And then sometimes kids move along the way. So we generally try to use those numbers as our seats to fill. And that's depending on what our staffing is, I look at the whole model. So in, what made this year tricky is at the high school, we've lost more than 25 kids since July 1. So if you go back to our original enrollments, I think we're, I think we're around 551. And we're down to about 521. My guess would be a lot of those kids may transition back. We actually had a couple of students transition back this week to start the second semester. They were, they had left to go to another state and now had transitioned back in for the second semester. So I'm trying to balance that out with the numbers of, you know, kids that are coming back versus the numbers of seats that will be available due to departures, usual departures, we call them, that are, that are related to tech or private schools or state moves, etc. So I would, I would only recommend focusing on the ninth grade and just filling seats at the ninth grade level.
Great, great, can you stop sharing, Mary Beth?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Super, so we'll allow comments and then we'll have the committee ask, now let's have, let's have the hearing first and then the committee can ask questions. So if you're a member of the public and you would like to speak about school choice, same thing, you can raise your hands. We kind of ask that you try and limit it to three minutes just because once you go beyond three minutes, you might be repeating yourself. And we will recognize anyone who wants to speak first before you would have an opportunity to speak again. So if you'd like to speak about school choice, feel free to raise your hand.
We, we had Pamela Millman.
So, we'll have Pam speak if you want to recognize her. And then please, if you do want to speak, if you could raise your hand, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Pamela, you should be all set.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, good evening, once again, I'm Pamela Millman. We are actually a family of school choice, so I'm incredibly appreciative of the district. And I just thought I'd give a couple of perspectives and maybe things for thought as, as, as it gets decided. So we're a family of choice, initially choiced in with two students. To be frank, we actually were looking at moving, but you know, pandemic, so here we are, but a choice. We think that school choice is a wonderful opportunity for the district to open up and provide students that are looking for something different, families that are looking for something different, and for the community of Hamilton-Wentham to be, create a little bit of more diversity. As you know, I think that's an incredible issue amongst the district is a level of diversity that is not present currently as I see it. We've had a great opportunity of being in the district. I think we actually bring a little bit of diversity to the district, which has brought to people's attention from my involvement, in fact. I also don't know, I'm not familiar with, but I'm asking if it could be shared by what, how it actually works. My understanding is that this is a source of income for the district when a student is choiced in. And I didn't see that in the chart that was presented. And perhaps that could be explained because I think that's an important piece, that that would be an added level of funding that comes into the district, which would certainly be, in light of the cuts and in light of other things, would certainly be something I think would be important to present as well. I think it's also important to create a level of consistency and unity when you're talking about what grades you do it in. And if the seats are open, I think it would be a shame not to open the middle school that would then be the feeder into the high school and to open it in general to the high school. Again, I could understand perhaps if it wasn't at the senior year level, but even so, opening up, I think, is only a benefit and I don't see it as a detriment. I'm just more curious to know what funding, how much that comes in, what, what it's looked like and perhaps a little bit more as to what the opposition is that's perhaps outside of pandemic-related. So I just figured I'd bring those pieces up when the committee votes, so thank you.
Thank you.
And no one else raised their hand. Um, so we'll have the committee ask any questions they would like after Dana. Yeah, why don't we have Dana make the motion and then we'll ask our questions. So Dana, if you want to start with middle school and just make a motion that we would not participate?
No, I don't think that's the way to do it.
What do you want to do, David?
I think we should make the motion to participate and then it either gets voted out or not. You don't want to vote for a negative.
Oh, you're right, yeah, yeah, vote in the affirmative, right, yeah.
So if I am making that motion in the affirmative, is the motion to?
Have the Hamilton-Wentham.
Continue in with the school choice program?
Or the school year 21, 22.
Okay.
Or 22, yeah, 21, 22?
At the middle school level.
At the middle school level, make it that we would participate. And then if people vote no, then we won't. Then if people vote no, then they will follow the recommendation, yeah.
I understand, okay, um, thank you, both of you. I move that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee approves that we continue to participate in the school choice program at the middle school level for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Second by David, okay. So are there questions that anyone would like to ask? Yeah, Julia.
I just, I just want to say that I had exactly the same question, actually, that Pam had. And when I had a talk with Mary Beth about it, as far as I understood, they are revenue drivers, but we have to be considerate of, are there gonna be so many students that we have to have a brand-new classroom? So we have to be cognizant, like, there might be a new team, there might be a brand-new classroom, which then requires a brand-new staff member and then requires a brand-new TA. So my objections to not having school choice were actually put to rest just when it was explained to me that, yes, it's a revenue driver, but we are concerned that it might elevate the numbers in such a way that it's gonna disrupt the school and that we're gonna have to add a new classroom. So I could be wrong in that, but that was how I under, that's how I understood it.
Peter?
Oh, I, I thought you were going to address Julia's. Julie, did you have a question? Like, did you, did it answer your question for, I guess?
I was just gonna say, I had the same question, so I'm not sure if that is the appropriate response. So I guess I did have a question. I just wanted it to be out in the public record. The answer that I got was satisfactory, but I would love to get it out to the parents.
Okay, I, I guess I have a couple of different questions. First, for those six, in the, you know, the recommendation I see is not to open school choice for, at the middle school. What happens to the 16 kids that are choiced in right now?
I can answer that. Any student that is currently part of our school choice program is grandfathered in through graduation. So they're, those students would stay with us. This is a question of whether or not we want to introduce new students into the program. And one of the things that I would ask, Vinnie, can you just pull up the number in terms of what we've budgeted for school choice revenue?
Yep, we budgeted roughly exactly $399,500. That takes into consideration getting a new sixth-grade class of about six students. So if you do vote to not continue it, we would have, we would probably have to drop our budget by about $30,000 for school choice.
That, that was my other question. So 30, that, we, we would lose 30,000 of revenue coming in?
Correct. Just another way to look at it, we do receive about $5,000 per student, but our average per pupil cost per student is somewhere around $18,000. So depending on which way you look at it, it can cost us money. But like they said, if it's filling a seat, an empty seat in a class, it does, it does bring in revenue. So it depends which way you look at it. It's definitely a tough choice.
PPE, lawn, the worst number ever, you know that.
And if I could just add on to that, part of what Julia was referencing is that what we, we try to do is to be strategic around school choice. So if we can add a student in, but not add additional costs to our, our schools by virtue of a teaching assistant or a teacher, then it makes really good sense for the district to do that. Part of what Principal Hovey has indicated is that the numbers are volatile enough at this moment that we are, we are not sure whether or not if we take in additional students, what the impact would, would be based on, on our staffing needs. Again, we don't know exactly how many students may be coming back that were homeschooled or have been fully remote. So there, there, there is more of a vulnerability there that we could accept students in that would push us over staffing in certain areas.
Finish up, Peter, and then David's going to go.
I guess, yeah, two, two remaining questions. So if we lose 30,000, are we going to end up losing another teacher?
At this point, we have an initial recommended budget. You know, things are still fluid and moving. So no, I would not anticipate that that would be a reduction in a teacher, but we will have to figure out how we would adjust that number.
Okay, and so my, my last question had to do with, so we don't know who's coming back after COVID from the, the folks who are in private school or homeschool. But we do know how many left to go to, you know, we do know the numbers. So is there any room? Would, if we, if they, let's say, assuming they all came back in the fall, would there be any room for any school choice students?
So Peter, I can, let me give you some numbers here. Based on our current enrollments, we have 47 students that we would have typically expected to be in-person at the middle school that have either chosen homeschool or private school. And if they were to all return this year, I don't have the, the fifth-grade numbers and those tend to be, to fluctuate a little bit unpredictably as well. But if those were to, if all of those students were to walk back in the building today, our average class sizes would be 25 in sixth grade, 24 in seventh grade, and 23 in eighth grade.
They are, they are maxed out.
Yeah, that's, so that, that, that's one of the drivers. I know that, you know, I would, I would be very surprised if every one of those students would return. But, you know, I, I'm leery about playing with such high numbers, particularly if we're gonna be working with any level of social distancing come September.
Okay, that, that answers my question. Because I, yeah, I can see why you're, if they all came back and we opened up school choice, we would have to create another classroom because those numbers are already.
David?
Hi, thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, Principal Hovey.
Um, so I, I just want to sort of add some, shed some light on this, right? Especially since I was part of the school committee that brought school choice into the middle school a few years ago. I'm very happy to do so. We vote every year, as required by law, to participate in the, in school choice. The, by saying that we're going to participate, we are not obligated to bring on students in, any, any new students in any, at any level. So in saying that, voting to approve this gives us the opportunity in August and September, that if there are seats available, to offer them to people who are interested from out of town. We are not obligated to say, okay, well, since we're participating, we need to fill six roles or anything like that. It has been the practice of the district over the past few years that we have offered seats to choice students after the school year has begun. Students have changed their mind at the last minute who were deciding to come. As Jeff Sands used to say, that you never know who's gonna be here until the first day of school, whether they're sitting there or not. You know, I just think the fluidity, while I completely understand and respect, you know, what Craig is saying about everyone that is left, I, I think the most fluid move for us to do would be to continue to, to vote in favor and continue to allow school choice so that we, as a district, have the option to pivot in the positive and actually bring in more students, you know, and continue to have the great choice students that we already have, you know, moving up the ranks. But to, you know, if there is the opportunity that we have that option, right? And just sort of not shut that door. I do understand that we can come back and just vote to, even if it is a one-year hiatus, come back next year and vote for it. I just, I just think that it leaves the most options for us as a district to actually vote in favor right now and continue on with school choice.
Um, Craig, it's my recollection that we did not participate this year.
Right, we, I, I believe the committee voted to participate and I think we accepted a, a very limited number in of siblings, yeah.
Only siblings.
Yep. So that, but that's important because we did vote to continue. We just, there was no seats avail, up as available.
I don't recall it that way, but it doesn't matter. There weren't any new families brought this year. Anna?
Thank you, Michelle, and Craig, and Eric. So I, just the number of students in both middle and high school right now, or the, the numbers we're looking at are four, six, six, 20, so on. Are those consistent, relatively speaking, over the last couple of years? I mean, are the numbers we're having this year artificially low or high? Are they pretty steady compared to usual?
I, I would have to go back and look at the actual numbers, but I think those are about where they typically are at the middle school. We don't have the highest, higher numbers like they do typically in ninth grade.
Okay, so, so that's, that's good to know. I guess there's a part of the logic of not allowing kids back that I'm not understanding just based on the numbers. So the total enrollment that you're showing, that's hybrid and remote, right? That's not just the hybrid, is that everybody altogether?
That, that is the total enrollment, yeah, that includes both in-person and fully remote students.
Okay, so if I'm looking at that, I went back and looked at our October 2020 enrollment reports and at the middle, so if, again, it's, you know, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the potential that the COVID variability is there because year to year, compared to October 2019, our enrollment at the middle school was 386 and October of this year is 377. So we're only off by nine kids year to year. So I'm having a hard time seeing this great influx of unknown kids that may come back, like. And I know that there's bubble years and it changes, but to me, it seems like the numbers are actually pretty consistent this year to the middle school as they were last year. It seems like the drop-off we had for COVID has much more affected the elementary levels as opposed to the middle and high school levels. Because I'm just comparing the numbers year to year. And like, even at the high school level, you know, grade nine last year was 115. And, you know, here we're looking at 122. Last year was 116, 129. Last year was 126 for 11th grade, here we're looking at 131. So I guess to me, it kind of feels like we're not, it doesn't really feel like we're in that much different a place. So I'm, I'm just having a hard time sort of understanding the, the cognitive leap of the variability as a factor because it doesn't seem like it's that variable at this level of the district. Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I believe so. You know, typically, our enrollment is, is around 135 or so per grade. You know, seventh grade has, has a significant change. I think that's about 15 students. I had just pulled some number, had my secretary pull some numbers for students who have enrolled in homeschool per grade, who may have been here, but might not have. So there, there are numbers that may not have actually gone in here. So there, there could be some flux in those exact numbers. But it, my, my, my recommendation, and I certainly will defer to the committee's decision here, is based more on just the unpredictable nature of where we are now versus where we might be in September. And if I can, you know, clearly define one of those variables, I think it makes planning a lot easier. While we might open school choice and say, we're going to only accept, you know, you know, we'll decide at the end of August whether we're gonna open things up, that does create a bit of a PR nightmare for our school because we, we will be inundated by calls saying, are you open? Are you accepting? And then we get into a bit of a gray And then we get into a bit of a gray area and I would ask the committee for some clarity on this if we go down that road about siblings. So if a, a student is accepted in ninth grade and has a seventh grade sibling, will we accept them with any level of priority? Or if they currently have a, a tenth grader and there's a sixth grader coming up, do we need to accept that? There, so there are these steps that, that complicate things. You know, I, I, again, I think there's a lot of value in the school choice from a social standpoint, but you know, there is the financial piece that is also a benefit. So, you know, it, it's, it's not a, a simple decision in my, in my mind, but you know, there, with so much uncertainty, I, I leaned towards a certainty in my mind in this particular.
Michelle Horgan?
And that was my question logistically. If we were to open up school choice for middle school and it's August twenty-fifth, who's contacting the parents? And there's that social emotional end from the student, you know, where are they going to school starting in June? I, I just feel logistically it, it might be just too great of a task for us. And I, I think a one-year moratorium, you know, it, we know it's successful. So just my opinion is we're just, as fallen with Craig says, is just to have a, a pause on it for a year at the middle school. So.
Yeah, Craig, as I recall, the year that we decided to have school choice, the class was like one nineteen or one twenty. They were, that class was really, really small. So it made sense, but since then, we've had pretty much a stability in the size of the class. So, um, all right, um, no one else?
I just wanted to bring up, because since you mentioned last year, and I think it is pertinent to this conversation.
Yeah, did you find it? I couldn't find it.
Right. It's from January twenty-ninth, the last year. The motion, the original motion that, that was made, the original motion that was made. So this does get a little complicated, was moving that the Hamilton and Regional School Committee vote to approve school choice for grades six through twelve and not actively seek grades six through eight candidates. Then there is a motion to amend to remove the language and not actively seek grades six to eight candidates, which passed unanimously by a roll call vote and then the school choice passed unanimously with a roll call vote. So exactly the same scenario, sort of nervous about where we're going to be, leaving the language and option open. Unfortunately, you know, like Frank said, you know, that extra variable. But, you know, I, 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 I think it's sort of, i- 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 I think it's, it's, it's interesting that we're sort of going through the same conversation right now, right? And how important the language is here.
Now, Peter? Sorry, Dana, bye. Go ahead, Peter, but please, Dana hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
Dana?
Thank you. So I had two things. One, I wanna, I'm really in, I do want to dive in a little bit more to what David's saying because I want to be sure I really do understand it. But before that, I wanted to speak to what Julia said at the beginning and I, this is more just something that I found to be really helpful years ago and I, I would be interested if other people see it this way, but my understanding of the way that we look at it in terms of the cost is like filling seats on the plane. So that if the plane is already flying and you've got empty seats on the plane, it makes sense to fill those seats. But if the plane is full and now you're going to need to charter another plane in order to bring those along, then it becomes not, it becomes costly rather than a sensible and potentially even, you know, cost benefit. So I'm just saying that just because for me, that was like a transformative way to understand school choice in terms of the filling the seats in the classroom that like, that made sense for me. I just, for just some more clarity, I want to really understand because for me right now, what David is saying makes a lot of sense that like to, to vote, you know, to vote to keep this as an option and not necessarily take action on it, that we would then, I, I just want to make sure I understand that we would, if we were to vote in the affirmative, that it would be then up to Craig and the administration to make decisions about whether or not that makes sense for the coming year. Is that correct?
That would mean.
Yeah. So in other words, that would leave it up to Craig and the superintendent and to decide things like if we wanted to say, okay, only siblings or, or no one at all, like, is that, okay, I just want to make sure that I understand. And that would give them the leeway. If they really felt like this just cannot happen, they could choose not to have any six through eight students, correct?
Correct. However, there is the administrative cost of setting up the applications and answering the phone calls. And it's like, when are we going to find out and how do I comply? And yeah.
And I absolutely, I, I absolutely do understand and I, and I do understand the challenge of, of, you know, not knowing, but and I don't know, I mean, maybe Craig, I don't know, does it ever happen? Do you ever have school choice students who begin after the school year has begun because you discover that it makes sense?
I wouldn't say, I, I don't recall any that it would have started, you know, significantly into the year, but we have had some students that have started right near the beginning. We also have students who have, you know, accepted a, a choice slot and then dropped out because they've decided to go somewhere else. You know, they may have accepted a choice slot in, you know, another district or they've moved or something else has happened.
Yeah, thank you.
There is some fluidity to that.
And I just, and then I will, but I, I just, my, my own children had really positive experiences of very close friendships with school choice students. It does, you know, we live in a very small community and it did broaden people's horizons a little bit. So I do think it's a hard question, but I appreciate it when taking the time to answer my questions.
Do we want to vote on the middles? Okay, we want to discuss it some more. Anna?
Peter is actually first, but I, I, I am, so just want to make sure he gets in here. Under normal circumstances, like in a non-COVID year, when, when does this process of administering the program usually happen? Like, is, is it usually a June thing or an August thing? Or when does it usually sort itself out?
Eric, I don't, you, you're a lot more familiar with the, the timeline than I am. So I don't know if you want to do that?
Sure. In, in the past, the vote has been in January, generally. We start that process of putting out the, the form to collect the information of people who want to apply. So we start building our list. We use a simple Google form on our website and we usually let that run for thirty days right around when we start our scheduling time at the high school, which is late March. We start to, we start to build the schedule and have kids select their choices and work with their teachers. So then they run concurrently from there. Once we get the numbers, we after usually about thirty days, I'll stop the numbers. We will then have a lottery. So we, we have to have a lottery that's drawn and it's videotaped. And we put everybody in a position. So we put all the names that apply to the high school in a, in a hat. We draw them out publicly and we put them in a position and that's their, that's the order that they are notified and we usually do them blocks of ten because not all of them will accept. So we'll go through that process until we say, okay, we're going to fill, say we were going to fill ten seats. We would do that until we filled the ten seats. And then if there was an issue where one of the ten that we filled left, whoever, whoever is next in line would, would give, be given that opportunity. We just keep going in order down the, the waitlist. Anybody who comes in after the fact, say they apply in, in May, they go to the end of the waitlist. So.
When does the lottery process usually happen in the calendar year?
So usually in the spring. So once we, once we put the Google form up in February, we usually wait about thirty days and then we'll do the drawing usually in March.
Okay. So would it be accurate to say that parents who apply understand it really is a lottery? Like, there's no guarantee. I'm just trying to get my head around, you know, is this emotionally jarring in some way? Because it seems like if you're applying, you know that there's a chance you might get not, not get in. Like, isn't, would it be accurate to say that parents understand that there's a risk to this all?
I, I would think so. And I think they understand that risk because oftentimes they're applying to other schools as well. So they'll be applying to private schools, they'll be applying to Hamilton, Wyndham, they'll be applying to, say, if Beverly had choice, they might apply, apply there as well, or Manchester Essex, whomever might be having a choice program open. So they do put their eggs in a number of baskets and sometimes that gets us into a little difficulty when school starts to nail show up because they didn't tell us they took, you know, some other school, but fine.
Okay.
It works out.
Peter?
Yeah, this conversation is helping me get closer to, you know, the, the, the timing question. I mean, can we vote to continue? But then, you know, leave it to Principal Hovey and Principal Tracy to limit how many they draw from the hat, I guess. To, or say, we're not going to draw any from the hat because we know the class is going to be full. I guess it's the timing issue that I'm trying to figure out. And can we just vote to say, vote to continue it, but then just not select any names from that hat?
We're, we're either voting to participate and see candidates or not. It's always been, it's always been the prerogative of the district after the board select chooses to do so to actually find out how many seats are available and make them and publicize them as being available.
And I think what Craig is saying to you is he won't be able to publicize these until summer at least, because he doesn't know how many people are returning.
Yeah, we don't even know if COVID, the whole mess is going to be over by then.
Right. Whereas Eric, I believe, and we're not voting on it, is saying, I know that I'm going to accept people, so I can go ahead.
You know, we can certainly accept people, but it's going to be contingent on availability at a certain point, you know, in August, most likely, I think is what we've done in the past when we've had to do a summer decision.
Yeah. So that was my question, Craig. You can't really tell people that they're accepted because once they're accepted, they're in, right?
Yeah, usually what will happen is once we say you are, you know, we, we have, say, five slots in sixth grade, we pick this five people who might be there. They have a certain amount of time to register with the district. So it's, you know, we give them, I think, what is it, twenty-four or forty-eight hours, Eric? To register, to go downtown and read, enroll in the district formally.
Yeah.
And if they, if they decide not to do that, then we'll move on.
But unlike, unlike the high school, which will do it around scheduling time, you might not do yours until August because that's when you'll have a stronger handle on how many resident students would be attending.
Right. You know, and we, we do, we do have the normal flux of students moving in and out of the district over the summer. You know, that's usually not an extreme amount, but it does affect things a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So why don't we vote just on the middle school part?
That's the only motion on the table.
Yeah. Did anybody else want to speak on it?
What was the exact motion?
To participate for the next school year. So if you vote yes, then Craig will be allowed to accept students. If we vote no, then Craig will not be allowed to accept students. Um, David, you're at the bottom of the screen tonight.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
No.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey? Yes, I guess. Okay. Uh, so that's six, one. Dana, can you make one for the high school?
Sure. I moved that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve to continue or to continue to participate in school choice at the high school level for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Second, anyone?
I'm second.
Second, sorry.
Um, okay. Anybody want to discuss this? Michelle Horgan?
I just, Eric, just a quick question. How often do kids choice in after freshman year? Just a, just a curious question. Right. It's a little redundant, but just a question.
So it depends. E- each year has been a little bit different based on the direction of the committee. So we had, Michelle Bailey was talking about our, our current ninth graders, when they were sixth grade, we opened it up six through twelve and we filled seats all the way up. I even, I even took a twelfth grader that, that last year, there was one person applied and he was great. He was fantastic. Like he, like he was part of our community the whole time, but each year has been a little bit different. So some years, you know, we can fill a slot or two. Other years, we, we can't, we don't at all. And then we, we also, one of, one of the things we have to watch is the carryover. So the current ninth grades, if you look at the numbers in the, the current ninth grade, they have a pretty big number of choice kids, but, but if you trace that back to when they were in sixth grade, there were a hundred and sixteen kids in that class. And that was why we, we chose to add backfill that. We were trying to get it up. I think to, I think we're to around a hundred and thirty-five at the time. So many of those kids have stayed with us all the way through and, and again, the, the eighth grade coming up, some of those six may or may not stay. And we also factor in the sibling piece. If we have a child enrolled who's a choice, then the sibling takes precedence even over the lottery. So that's, that's the first thing that happens.
Great. Thank you.
Anna? If we have kids who've choiced out to a different district, and I don't know if we have any sense of the number of kids that's done that, if they then change their mind and come back, are they allowed to do that? And would that bump people back off the lottery list?
I think I can answer that. We, we do have kids that choice out of our district. And if they choice out and went to, I'll just use an example to say, say they went to Manchester Essex for their ninth grade year, they didn't like it and they wanted to come back. As long as they live in our communities, they just re-register as students just like anybody else would. They wouldn't be considered, you know, choice for us. They would be resident enrollments. That, that's happened. It happens both with choice kids, with private school kids. It, it does happen through, through the school year.
Do we have a sense of the number of kids right now that are choosing out?
Any?
Yeah, at the end of last year was eighteen kids. We haven't got the exact number for this year yet, though.
Hmm, I'd be interested to know that number.
And then we also have our students that go to the tech, which is so basically a choice out student as well.
Yeah, the difference with them is the chart, uh, those towns actually get charged for them directly.
Right. Versus the district. Right.
And I, I could be wrong, but I think there's either two or three in total, but I, I could be wrong on that.
Two or three. Sorry, Vinnie, you said we don't. Go to the tech. Oh, no, no, no.
There's a lot more.
There's like twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Yeah, there's quite a few.
They take between six and ten a year. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Sorry, Vinnie, you said you don't know what the current number of kids that are choosing out of our district is that are not going to the tech?
Correct. Not at the top of my head, but I, I can get you that and let you know. I might even be able to check while we talk here, but.
Okay. I guess I am checking about the overall numbers, like just in terms of managing the volume that, you know, if we had, I don't even know what the number would be, let's for argument's sake, fifty kids who have choice out historically, it's not that many. Okay.
Yeah, it's fourteen, sixteen, seventeen or eighteen. It's not fifty.
Yeah.
Right. I'm just thinking like, Eric, is, is there, is there, so even though they can, Eric, customarily, once someone choices out, do they very often choice back in?
Not very often. I wouldn't say very often. So if we lose eighteen kids, we might get one, sometimes two back.
And those kids aren't all at the high school level.
Correct. And sometimes we get some back from the tech too. I, I, I re-enroll kids from St. John's, from Pingery, from the tech. Every year we, we get, you know, a few kids that trickle back in for various reasons, family.
Yeah, no, I just understand. I'm just trying to get a sense of like, you know, the average flow in, flow out. That makes sense.
Okay. So it looks like we're ready to vote.
I think Peter has his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see that. Sorry, Peter.
No, thank you, but I, I didn't lower it from the last time.
Okay, great. Okay. Uh, David?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, yes. Great. Super. We will want Vinnie and Craig to talk as we get closer in the budget season to make sure we put the appropriate number in for the budget. Super, we will want Vinny and Craig to talk, um, as we get closer in the budget season to make sure we put the appropriate number in for the budget. All right, uh, we don't have any direct new business, uh, listed, but the first thing we have, um, on docket tonight is going to be hearing, um, about budget and related to the Special Education Department. Um, we had originally scheduled, um, some other things for tonight, but we felt like we wanted to give this topic its fair time, um, and not be rushed. So this is the only department we're going to be hearing about tonight.
Thank you, Michelle, and before we start that, I just want to offer, um, Eric and Craig, I know they have to be back in school really early tomorrow morning. So thank them for attending, but, um, it would just be sure that they know they can move on. Um, as we bye-bye. Um, as we move on to the special education presentation, um, this evening we have the Director of, uh, Special Education, Stacy Busek, our Secondary Coordinator of Special Education, Ryan Roth, who joins us new to the district this year, and our Elementary Coordinator of Special Education, Maureen Smith, to present to you. As you know, special education is a significant part of this budget, and there is a lot of work and thought being done to both serve the, the more vulnerable students in our district and to do so at a cost that is, is efficient and, um, responsible to the taxpayers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Busek, who will talk about and give an overview of special education spending in the proposed fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Um, good evening, thank you for having me, I am going to just share my screen here. Can everybody see that?
Yes, thank you.
So this is a, a Student Services Overview. Um, I first want to start by, um, introducing the staff in our Su- Student Services Department at Central Office. So, um, as Superintendent Ben, that Maureen Smith is our, um, preschool and elementary special education coordinator. Um, Ryan Roth is new to us this year, coming from California, and he is our secondary special education coordinator. Um, our administrative assistant staff in our office includes, um, Jennifer Guarino. Um, she supports, um, functions and assignments for me, but also supports the elementary end of all the paperwork and coordination in conjunction with, um, Maureen. Kate Lowe is, um, new to our office this year, she just started in November. Um, and she is my primary administrative assistant and works on grants and, um, a lot of our, um, expenditures. Um, and then Susan Hallinan is our secondary, um, administrative support person, so she works, um, closely with Ryan Roth. Um, I do want to acknowledge, um, Elaine Rogal, who has, had been in the district for about seventeen years and, and Kate Lowe is replacing Elaine, retired in November. Um, so, and she's still, we haven't let her fully go yet, she does come back and provide, um, training to Kate on, um, different activities that are required at certain, um, timeframes within the school year, so she's still with us. I want to just jump back before I start to, some, some others I want to acknowledge are, um, within our, our Student Services Department, are, are special education teachers, our related therapists, who include our speech and language, um, pathologists, our occupational therapists, our physical therapists. Um, did I forget anybody? I want to acknowledge too our teaching assistants, um, our TAs across the district who are supporting our students day in and day out and working in conjunction with our special education teachers. Um, our counselors, our um, nursing staff and, um, who else did I miss, our tutors, our, um, English language tutors, we have two in the district. Um, Emily Jane, um, Emily James and, um, Maureen Miller, who also work with our students. In almost all of the buildings this year, um, in a variety of ways. Um, I just need to say, since March, um, our staff has worked tirelessly to support our students and work collaboratively with our families, and I think they have, um, absolutely shown ingenuity and flexibility in light of the, the different changes that have happened through the year, whether it's been DESI guidances, guidance changes or mandates, um, scheduling changes, model changes. Um, they've worked through it all, and, um, their focus has been on supporting our special education students and our English language learners, and so I just, I need to acknowledge all their dedication and support to our students and families. And I also want to acknowledge, um, Kristin Lazar, our Director of Counseling, who has, um, supported our counselors, um, and our administrative leadership team across the district. Um, Leah Tobanken, who is our nurse leader, and our nurses are working so hard and tirelessly right now, um, in light of the COVID pandemic and all of the contact tracing they need to do in supporting our students as well as doing their regular job. Um, and also I want to acknowledge Paige Mench- Mencini, she is our, um, Early Childhood Partners Coordinator and works with our district and in conjunction with Manchester Essex and, um, supporting birth to six students in our district and other districts, um, so she does a lot of planning and activities, um, getting, um, getting services to our most youngest, um, children in the district, so I need to acknowledge all of them. So here we go, um, with special education and the student services, um, we've acknowledged our focus areas, and we've got three areas that are kind of overarching to what we're focusing on. First of all is specialized services for students. So our, our work is to ensure that we are provisioning services, not only for our English language learners, but our students with disabilities, and we're meeting their needs and we're supporting, um, growth. Fiscal responsibility, um, we've been working to stabilize and decrease our out-of-district costs. Um, that's been an ongoing concern within the community and within the school committee and within, um, the district and the, in our department, and so we've been working on that. Um, we're working to ensure the provision of services are fiscally responsible while meeting the needs of our students. So another focus area is looking at our programmatic and staffing strategy. So we're continually doing an ongoing analysis of our programs and our student needs to make sure we're effectively planning um, for, um, our students. Again, an ongoing analysis of staffing needs. Um, sorry, it was student needs before, but staffing needs now to make sure that we have enough staff in place, um, to support our students. And something that's been more important this year is ensuring our staff are supported. Again, one of the, I have this diagram in here, I just like this diagram because we always need to think in terms of educating the whole child, and there's a lot of elements to supporting a student in our district, and, you know, one of the most important is, you know, academics are important and ensuring that we're meeting the needs academically, but we also need to think about social emotional learning, and are we supporting our students, um, with social needs and emotional needs? Um, cognitive development, so looking at, um, are we preparing students, are they becoming, um, problem solvers, are they becoming, um, able to, um, kind of build knowledge? Physical is always important, mental health, um, we're always looking at how we can better support our, our students and also support families in finding outside supports as well. And then identity development, kind of looking at ensuring students have a sense of self, um, they're connected, um, and they have their individuals. And they feel confident as individuals. So, um, this isn't just a district responsibility, it's also community responsibility to support our students. So our other responsibilities in terms of special education, um, the main one is to provide a free and appropriate public education, so if you hear F A C E all the time, it's, it, that's what it, the acronym acronym is. And we need to look at that within providing it within the least restrictive environment. So we need to ensure that our, um, our supports are reasonably calculated and they're appropriate to meet the child's unique needs and, and the child, for the child to gain progress. Least restrictive environment that has different meanings for different students. So a general education classroom is going to be a least restrictive environment for one student, another student might have pullout services. So that's their least restrictive environment, a student may go into a program within our district, that's their least restrictive environment. We have students that go out of district, we have students who end up in residential placement, so, you know, least restrictive is individualized to the student. And then, when we're not able to meet student needs, um, within our school environment and we're not able to support them in making progress, um, in light of their unique needs, then we either have to create or locate programming for them. Our other responsibility again is to ensure that state and federal regulations are implemented, we're following them. And then, again, we need to be mindful of, um, programmatic and fiscal responsibility when we're determining the provision of services, whether it's in district services or it has to be out of district services. So what are some things we consider when we're making student-centered decisions? Um, we look at, are we meeting the level of need for our students? So they can access and demonstrate progress, so are they accessing the curriculum? And are they progressing, um, in light of their disability? We need to look at how we maximize services at the building level, but we also need to look at that at the district level. Um, so there have been a lot of times where we have moved staffing around to meet needs in one area where it's, there's a decrease in needs in another area. A good example of that is usually with our related therapies, um, there can be movement of staffing to meet needs in different buildings. The other thing we need to look at is our physical space, and is it conducive to meeting the needs of our students? In particular, when we're looking at the type of instruction they need, if it needs to be one-on-one, everything in an appropriate space. If, um, our programs and looking at the needs of our programs and other spaces conducive to supporting the areas that students need to, um, develop skills in. One of the spaces we're looking closely at, um, and this started last year, was our intensive program at the high school and looking at how we can build a space to support more daily living skills, practice and development, the cooking, um, cleaning, how to do laundry, things like that. And then, are we working within a collaborative model? So for some of our students, um, they may have outside agency involvement. So are we collaborating with outside agencies and working together to, to, to discuss and share strategies or ways to better support a student in the school environment and the outside environment? And also, are we working collaborati- collaboratively within a team in terms of students may have multiple teachers within a building, and are we all collaborating consistently to ensure we're meeting the needs of the student? And of course, um, the biggest consideration is what is in the best interest of the individual student, so we're always looking at that. So within our department, there's lots of different services and needs. Um, staffing, of course, is important and ensuring that we have highly qualified staff to, to work with our students. Um, so we're always looking at that when we're doing our hiring. Contracted services is, is, um, kind of a big piece in the department right now. Um, contracted services include um, orientation and mobility services, vision services, um, our BCBA services. In, for FY twenty-one, we had, um, two positions approved in the budget, one was, um, a full-time FTE speech and language person for the secondary level, and then ABCBA for the district. We have not been able to hire for those two positions, and so we're continuing to contract out for those services. Um, so that's the other piece, the other thing, um, assistive technology is another piece we're now contracting out for, we don't have an assistive tech person in district. Um, and then those are our kind of current, um, contracted services. The other piece that we have is extended school year, so we, um, each year provide services to students during the summer in our summer programmings. For FY twenty-one summer, so this past summer, um, we had a unique experience in trying to bring students back in a very, um, COVID-safe environment. Um, I think we were very successful with that, and I have to give kudos to all the staff that were involved in our summer programming. So within the summer, we ran two different models, we had a remote model, and then we had in-person. Uh, we brought our programs in-person, um, but we limited it to, we had our pre-K in-person, our intensive programs in-person, and our castle programs in-person. So in our summer, for a total number of students who participated in our summer program was a hundred and six. We had twenty-nine students in-person at the Winthrop School for their services. Um, and then we had forty-seven elementary students who were, um, receiving tutorials remotely. And then we had another thirty secondary students, some middle and high school, who received their services, um, remotely as well. So we had a very busy summer, whether we were in-person or remote. Um, other components are extended day, some of our students do receive additional services after school ends for them. Um, and typically, it's, it's a home service, um, or a tutorial. Um, the other piece is professional development, we're always looking at what do we need to bring in for professional development. And currently in this year, we have staff who are receiving Warden Gillingham training that's coming up. Um, we are working with landmark outreach for some, um, professional development opportunities, and, um, we're always seeking others, um, other professional development as well. Transportation's a big piece, um, we're currently transporting about twenty-two out-of-district students. It's lower than our typical number because some parents are opting to transport on their own and not put them on a bus. And then out-of-district tuition is a huge, um, piece of the budget, um, as well, and also is needed because some students, just their needs are beyond what a school district can support, and they need the more restrictive environment to, um, gain skills. So I wanted to share our referral rates, um, so these are, referrals are, um, requests for evaluations, um, to consider eligibility for special education. Um, these are a combination of referrals that might come out of IST, which is our, um, student support team, instructional support team at the district level. And, um, but the, the most, most of them, the higher percentage are parent referrals or outside referrals. It could also be EI referrals or other outside agencies. So we had a unique year in FY twenty-one, whoops. So in F, um, in FY twenty-one, but also FY twenty, so FY twenty, our total number of referrals for special education evaluations was a hundred and one. And of that a hundred and one, um, forty-one were found, um, eligible for special education. But what's interesting about this number is when we shut down in March, evaluations stopped. So we had, um, a carryover of evaluations into this year, the start of the school year, and we carried over twenty-eight evaluations that should have happened in FY twenty as initial evaluations. And so we came into this school year having to evaluate, um, those twenty-eight students. Along with, what's not on here are our three-year reevaluations. Um, so we also had to carry over twenty-two triennials or three-year reevaluations into FY twenty-one. Um, and then you add on um, our referrals for FY twenty-one, we're low right now, um, we've had thirty-nine, and, um, these numbers are updated as of, um, last week, so they're numbers of last, last week, so. Um, we've been fairly stable in terms of our identification with special education students from FY eighteen until now FY twenty, we're lower on FY twenty-one, but our numbers are also lower. So currently, um, of the thirty-nine new referrals um, for initial evaluations in FY twenty-one, we've only found fourteen eligible, but we still have more evaluations to complete, um, because of the timelines for evaluating. Our percentages of identification, um, in district are highest, um, disability category, what we're identifying is health impairment, um, with the majority of these being students, um, who have diagnosis of ADHD. Um, so we have a lot of students with ADHD. So we have a lot of students with ADHD who are on IEPs and receiving specialized services. Our next few categories, specific learning disability, which that has, that number's always been a concern and we've had a focus on that. Primarily with the specific learning disability, the areas are around reading, literacy development. And then autism, autism has stayed pretty static. So this is our special education enrollment and where we are at this point in looking at it over the last several years since FY16 and where our numbers are. So we we're looking at stabilizing our numbers. Right now, we're at 329. What I will say about this is it does not include homeschool students or our private school students. These are students who are in our district, sitting in our district, or they're funded with out-of-district placements. So we're, we've increased, but we're, we're only increased at 0.2% compared to previous years. So I think we're starting to stabilize a bit, hopefully, and we're hoping to see a decrease moving forward. But we are at 19% right now. And we're just above the state percentage for special education students. So those are our numbers right now. So with that 329 students, for the students who are in district, what does that look like? We have a variety of programs across the district, starting with our preschool. And if you look at our preschool numbers, preschools at Winthrop, we're having a decline in our special ed numbers right now. This, I think, was FY21 was a unique year. We're continuing to watch this number here. We're still kind of early. So we're, we're looking closely at this in terms of what are our staffing needs going to be for next year? So as we continue to evaluate students through the spring, these numbers may adjust. The other area that we're looking at is in the academic support. So if you look at the Bueker School right now, there's a decline in the projection for next year for FY22 in terms of number of students with that requiring academic support. However, we're in January. We still have a few more months left and we have, we still have students that are on, on the docket to be evaluated. So we're watching this number, the 13. What I will say is these numbers are to date for FY21 across all the programs and we're projecting for FY22. As Superintendent Banios mentioned earlier around fluid and moving, the same with all of our special ed numbers, they're a moving target. So we're going to continue to watch our projections as we're moving through the rest of the school year. There are different things that can impact the numbers. Move-ins can impact numbers, move-outs can impact numbers. Initial evaluation results could impact numbers as can three-year reevals. So the numbers can fluctuate, but we're paying close attention to those. So our secondary level, our numbers are staying fairly fluid. We do have some decreases in some areas and some, some increases in others. And again, we're continuing to watch the numbers to ensure that we're appropriately staffing. And the other thing, along with looking at the number, we also need to analyze the services the individual students are receiving because numbers of students is one thing for caseload or program. But the other important factor is what are the minutes or hours of services a student receives? Because that's going to impact the need for staffing as well. So all of those are taken into consideration. So here's our, our out-of-district tuitions with a look at it from FY18 to current. So currently, we are under budget to what we had originally budgeted for the start of the school year. There's, there's several factors that play into the changing in numbers. We had had in our projections from FY20 to FY21, when we came into the year, our initial budget projected students who we did not think were going to meet graduation requirements. We had some situations where, where there was move-outs. But we also had situations where we brought students back. So there's different factors that play into this. And we also have students who, we were really concerned about last year and, and there, there were kind of a lot of issues going on. But right now, they're, they're doing, those students are doing pretty well. In a lot of cases, the, the current kind of model for how we're working has worked for those students. So we are continuing to monitor these numbers and adjust them as we go through the school year. So this current actual budget is to date. And we are, for some students who are not out of district but projected, we are adjusting for school year the figures. So the tuitions are decreasing based on students that are not going out now and just adjusting for time of year and looking at what the cost is from now till the end of the school year if they were placed out. Back in FY19, I had come to the school committee and requested two positions at the high school. They were program positions. So since that request each year, there is a question of how are we doing in terms of return on investment? So the two programs we added in for FY19 were a language-based program at the high school. And that includes a language-based teacher and a teaching assistant. And then we also added an intensive learning program. So we call it our ILAS, our intensive learning academic skills program, which includes a program teacher and a teaching assistant. So based on the number of students we've been able to keep in, because again, both of these programs weren't in place and we were losing students to outplacements or to, which could, which included other public schools who had programming, but then also private special education schools. So we've been keeping track each year because when we presented these two positions in FY19, we had projected a cost savings over four years of $2.2 million. So each year, we've looked at how many students do we have in the program? And then what would the potential cost be for an out-of-district placement? And then we kind of deduct staffing costs. And to date, between FY19 and the end of this year, we will have saved 1.3 million from these two programs. And so I anticipate at the end of FY22, we will have exceeded our projected cost savings over the four years. Other positions we had added in FY19 were a full-time out-of-district team chairperson. That was eliminated for FY21. We had also had a .5 special education teacher at the middle school. That position was eliminated in FY21 this year. However, we increased a .6 position at the middle school to a 1.0 to support the reading needs. So whoops. How are we supporting increasing demands? We're continuously monitoring student needs as, as we said before. What we added for FY21 was a BCBA. And again, we have, that position has been left unfilled. So we're continuing to contract for those services. And that position supports across the district, primarily our programs and then other student needs and staff, and staff consultation needs. We added, again, the 1.0 speech and language pathologist. It was an increase from .6 because of the level of student needs and the number of student needs for that service. Again, that has currently still unfilled, so we are contracting for that service. We also added last year, which was left out of the original slide, was a 1.0 elementary language-based teacher at the elementary school level, so that our program at Cutler. And the reason we added that was because of the numbers of special, of students going into the language-based program. If you recall from the previous slides, there's 17 students in the program. And we were looking to create two models within the program. Students who needed a fully sub-separate program, so not going into content area classes in a gen ed classroom. And then students who were able to be included in content area classes. So we could better support the literacy needs of our students. Currently, because of the environment we're in, all of the language-based students at the elementary level are sub-separate in, in the program classroom. So there's no cross-classroom happening. This year, it wasn't in the original budget going into FY21. We had to add a special education teacher to support our elementary students who are working within the remote model. This person's also working with homeschool students and some private school students. Between, with, with the different models that were happening, it was difficult for our special education teachers to meet the needs of their, the in-person and remote students, plus try to tackle the new Apple program that came in to support the remote students. So I gotta tell you, Heidi, who is the teacher for this, has been amazing. And she's been really working hard to support our, our remote students. What we've requested for FY22, or what you'll see in the, the budget, is a secondary reading specialist to support our language-based students at the high school level and then to also work on interventions at the middle school level. We had projected back in, with the FY19 request for the language-based program and the language-based teacher, that by year two or three, we would need additional staffing because of the numbers. Our numbers are increasing in that program. We're keeping kids in district. And so we need this additional staffing to support those students. And then we did have initially, I should note that it's a reallocation. It's not an increase to the budget with this position. It's being reallocated from another position. We've also requested a pre-K teaching assistant. Coming into FY21, we had had three pre-K teaching assistants cut. Our typical model was a teacher and two TAs in a classroom. We're currently, currently working one teacher and one TA. However, back with our projections for next year, we're low in our numbers going into FY22 for special education students in pre-K. So this, this floater request is, we're watching it because our numbers, if our numbers don't support the need for the additional TA staffing, then we're not going to move forward with that request. So what are we doing in student services during COVID? We're working off of individual hybrid plans and individual remote plans for students. Our, our structure looks different. So our IEPs are written for a five-day regular typical school day, school week, school year. So we have developed the individual learning plans to support the instruction that's happening for students right now. Students are all receiving their services. It's just some of the services may look different that, what is in the IEP. So currently, if you take our 329 students that we talked about earlier, right now, we have students who, with disabilities, so students with disabilities who are working within the remote environment. At the elementary level, that's 12 students. We have 15 at the middle and 12 at the high school. We have students with disabilities who are coming in on no, non-cohort days. So cohort A assigned students, they come in on Thursdays or Fridays for additional in-person instruction and support. Some of our students are coming in on Wednesdays. So at the elementary level, that's about 35 students who are getting additional in-person beyond what they're getting on their cohort days. At the middle school, it's 28. And then at the high school, we have 10. Our English language learners, we have 14 English language learners identified in the district. And some of them are coming in for additional services. We have one at the elementary, one at the middle, and three at the high school. And right now, we have two else identified students who are working remotely. So our tutors are also working within an in-person environment and a remote environment to support our English learners. So what are our next steps? We're going to continue to monitor our staffing needs, you know, and continue to monitor our student numbers, what we've projected and adjust as we move through the rest of the spring. We're looking at professional development and what our staff needs. So that's always, we're always looking at that so we can ensure that we're supporting them to the best of our abilities. Tiered systems of support. We are looking at that as a district. So how can we have multi-tiered systems of support? And this is reflecting district goal number four that we're working on as a leadership team. And one of the things we are doing in terms of this to continue to address our literacy needs, which was brought up previously, but also look at other areas like social emotional learning. So how can we build the tiered systems for our students from kindergarten through grade 12? We're working in collaboration with the Essex County Learning Community. We had been chosen to be a member district last year. This year, we're working with two consultants to help us develop a framework for tiered systems of support across each level. At the elementary level, we're working and focusing on literacy at the K-1 level. And so we have teams that will be, a team of staff that will be working with George Batch and Judy, I always forget Judy's last name. George Batch and
Judy Elliott, I believe.
Thank you. It is Judy Elliott. So they have started work with the leadership team and, and looking at how, like what areas of need we have and how we're going to move forward with it. And then they will again be working with teams of staff to develop a framework that we can use across all three levels to provide supports to all of our students, particularly looking at interventions and, and planning a robust intervention plan for our students. In turn, I think that will also support decreases in referrals to special ed as we're moving forward. The other thing we want to do, I have, I have concerns and also in talking with Maureen and Ryan, the health disability category is extremely high. Again, it's, it's a quarter of our students. And you combine that with the specific learning disability, that's 50% of our students in those two categories. So we're continuing to work on the literacy issue across, in moving forward. But we want to start looking at why are our students ending up found, find, being found eligible for special education under a health disability? And really digging deeper into what needs to be done before they end up with requests for evaluations. And in, and so that's our plan moving forward in terms of digging deeper into that number and, and the why to it. Are there, are there any questions about any of the information I shared?
I, I do have a question. I can't raise my hand. I don't know what the thing is.
Do you want me to keep the slideshow up for your questions? Do you want me to keep the slideshow up for your questions to reference it?
What?
That helps?
Are you talking to all of us or just me?
Um, all well, everybody, I guess, if there's questions coming up that do they want me to keep the slideshow up to reference?
I I I have it on my iPad. I'm looking at it on my iPad.
Okay.
I know I'll have other questions, but on slide twelve, we're out of district tuition costs. Is that is that okay, Michelle, that I ask? Give me.
We can't hear you, Michelle. Yeah, that's fine, Peter. I just I couldn't see people, so I could, but I could hear you. That's great.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was okay. Yeah, on slide twelve, I was just looking at the the budgeted versus actual cost, and in eighteen we we under budgeted by three hundred and sixteen thousand, nineteen, we're three hundred and fifteen thousand, twenty, two hundred and three two two hundred and three thousand. And now we're I I remember you saying that that actual tuition so far is at four point three million, and we budgeted four point six roughly. Are we expected to go over again on the budget?
No. One of the things that was happening, and and this was happening pre-me, is so Kathy Harris would give a projected out a district placement number. When I came in, I would do the same thing. What we were projecting was not getting budgeted. So we were we were budgeting numbers lower than our projection and what we estimated for tuitions. So it was happening every year, July one. We started in the red without a district because we had more students out than what was accounted for in the budget. We in FY19, I will be on, I will tell you for the first time, the projections were budgeted, and we went over, but we had some unknown circumstances happen that created the overage. I think we're in a good position, and I think we're gonna go be fine. I don't anticipate us going over what what we're now have as an act as an actual current to date. And we'll keep adjusting the number as we go through the school year. We try to be conservative, but trying not to be overly conservative that we're then in a deficit starting July one. So we've been very careful with the numbers. I think this year has been a unique year because, again, there were lots of things we did not anticipate when when the final budget came around, and we had quite a few students who were not, for example, meeting graduation requirements. But when they hit the remote setting, they just the remote environment worked for them, and they were successful, and they were getting their work done, and they were participating more in the educational setting remotely than they were in person. And the majority, most of these were out-of-district students. So, you know, this number is hard to judge moving forward because of the variances that happened this year in terms of what school looked like.
Is that why? Is that why the numbers and the 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 student numbers actual in eighteen and to date this year, you know, one's fifty, one's fifty-two? But the price or the 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 cost has gone up over one point two million dollars. Is that is that because of the types of services that are that are different? I I'm just wondering why it's a one point two four million-dollar increase?
One of them is it depends on the programming level, and so the tuition. So the tuition costs can, although the numbers may look pretty static and the tuition has increased significantly, it depends on the placement. We have some students in play in in placements that are are costly. The other thing you need to consider is the increase in tuition prices from year to year. We try to the the predict, I forget the number, it's a two-point some increases each year are above two percent. So, you know, we have to adjust for the the percentage increase in tuition tuition costs from year to year as well.
Okay, so it's not a question of how we negotiate the price. They just set the price and
We don't negotiate the the out-of-district that the OSD sets the tuition rates. So special education-approved schools have rates that that are set by OSD, so we have to comply with those rates. So there is, there's no negotiation for tuition costs. Consortions have a board of directors that sets their rates. They're not part of the OSD, so the OSD is private special education schools, day programs, and residential programs.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Dr.
You're welcome.
Michelle Hargan, did you have your hand up yet?
I did. Thank you, Stacy. Last year, we eliminated the out-of-district team chairperson. Can I ask who has absorbed that role and is it? It's probably you, but is it? Has you have you found that's been detrimental to the district, or have you guys become like everybody else more efficient and effective in that role now?
You know, I've I've been thinking about that. There there's a pro and a con to it. The the pro is I'm directly involved with the out-of-district students, so I'm directly monitoring versus someone else. So I have more information and more insight than hearing it secondhand. So that's that's been a plus. I've also become gotten to to be more familiar with parent, the parents and the students as well. So I like that. The con is it's very time-consuming because I'm monitoring and you know, scheduling team meetings and reviewing IEP documentation and and doing that piece, so yeah, I have not, I took the it took it fully on because coming into the school year, we were so behind in our office because of the closures, and we had a substantial number of team meetings that needed to happen once we got back into school. And so I gotta tell you, Maureen and Ryan were just in constant team meetings with catch-up, and then also having to process the paperwork that goes with it. So it there was nobody I could just say, here, take this, so. Yeah.
Do you do you see this years this year, but in future years possibly adding that back into? Or some or some type of variation of it?
I hope so, but I think we need to go year to year. Honestly, I I would rather prioritize direct student needs and direct student service needs over that position if we had to make a choice. Would I love to have it back? Yeah, I'd love to have more time to focus on other things, and this just is something that that kind of gets in the way of some things that that need to get done as well. So once things stabilize, you know, Maureen and Ryan and I'll sit down and look at can can we kind of divvy up some of the the out-of-district as well, but yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer and everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Julia?
Oh, I just have a quick question about more the future vision, like the percentage is what concerns me. So nineteen percent. And we see it going up year after year, and I know you're not a fortune teller, but do you see that as a trend, like maybe half a percentage? One percent every year? I I know you really can't say, but I I see it as a trend across the across the board, and I I just worry for our budgeting that we're gonna have to take into account that this might go up a half a percentage or a percentage every year.
I mean, if if you look at the trend from FY16, we were increasing by around, you know, one percent. You know, FY17, it was it was a little less, but we've we're pretty static and consistent from FY18 to nineteen to twenty. I was I was hopeful in seeing the point two percent increase for a couple of things. It's less of an increase than we've had in previous years significantly, and it's a less of an increase than the state had as a whole. Just a small portion. So I'm just I'm hoping that we're starting to stabilize, and then we'll start to see decreases. Again, the challenge is FY20 was a unique year, and coming into FY21, it's also a unique year. So yeah, I think we're gonna have to watch it, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we're moving in the right direction. We have amazing staff across the district. They're dedicated. We're working hard. Maureen has is amazing, and and Ryan has been a great addition. And we've really started to look at things, you know, one of the things is eligibility determination and looking more closely at how we're identifying students and, you know, making sure that we're making the right decisions.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, did you want to add something to that?
To to add to that piece that that connects up, I think, with your question, Julia. And we have goal number four in our district related to looking at literacy intervention. You've seen some of the ads in the budget. And one of the things, you know, there are a number of different items that are important in terms of ensuring that only the students that truly need special education end up in that program. And without a well-built-out second tier of intervention, what often happens is that students end up in special education that actually do not need that level of intensity to be serviced. They could have been serviced in a a less intensive tier-two environment. So one of the things that we see in this district is that our tier-two intervention is not currently built out well. And by investing in that, much like Stacy showed when you invested at the high school level with programming, there's actually a savings associated with that over time. That same level of investment in a tier-two program will most likely generate that same type of savings. We will be still able to get kids what they need, but to do it in a less intensive and therefore a less expensive environment. So as we're putting these things in the budget, not only are we working hard to service kids' needs, but to do so in the most efficient manner possible.
And then, did you want to add something?
Yes, thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Stacy, for super awesome presentation, and to everyone who works so hard on this aspect of our district. I have so much respect. So I have a couple kind of detailed questions, and then sort of just a general kind of lexicon clarity question that I'm struggling with that I think could help. So if I unless I'm totally bananas, no comments, please. Thank you. Unless I'm totally bananas, I feel like the only places that sped line items are actually being increased per se are with this floating TA salary and then the middle school reading specialist. Am I reading that correctly, that those are the new kind of line items that fall under sped?
Yeah, tho- those those are the ones that were presented in the initial budget presentation.
Okay, so then
And and again, the 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 special education reading teacher, it's it's not an increase to the
Right, no, I totally, I totally, I'm totally with you on that, and I love the creativity of like shifting, and I I get that part, I get. I guess my question is the floating preschool TA, and this maybe is a little bit more of a question for Vinnie and or Mary Beth, is that being included in the overall TA increases? That at one point, we say it's a nine, and another point, we say it's a nine point three, and then another point, we say it's an eight point nine. And then the math I get is actually a little bit different, but is that point nine sped floating TA included in that overall TA number?
Vinnie, I'm gonna ask you to address that one. Oh, you're muted, Vinnie.
Yeah, I was going to unmute myself. It certainly should be included in the numbers. The numbers I presented last week, it it would have been included. I'd have to look at what you're I have to see what you're looking at in terms of the difference between the eight point
Yeah. Yeah, that's just
And what document you're referring to?
Yeah, I'm looking at the the presentation Mary Beth did last time, the bigger budget one that has a couple different it it it's just listed differently. So I guess my question is, from trying to track what we're talking about, it would be really helpful if we to some degree, use the same lexicon, because I think at some point, we call it a TA. At other places, I think we're calling it literacy tutor, but that's still the same position, right? It's the same.
There there are no, in trying to capture this, there there's teaching assistance. So, for example, we're adding in some teaching assistance to help cover the library. And then we there is a type of teaching assistant called a literacy tutor.
Okay.
And it it's at a slightly different pay grade and that kind of thing. So in trying to just summarize the data, they come under teaching assistance, but there are sub-separate categories, and then as Stacy is sharing, the preschool tutor.
Okay, and then are are the are the instructional aides yet another different flavor, but all kind of in the same bucket?
I I'm not sure which page you're looking at.
That's um, it's just, I just, it's underneath all of the elementary schools under Gen Ed. Some of these increases that are included in this roughly nine nine point O FTE increase are included under instructional aides. So I guess
Are you asking about last week's presentation? Are you asking about Stacy's presentation?
I'm talking about just the line item budget.
From last week?
Yeah, the the overall budget, but I'm just trying to understand, just just to like clarify, that's helpful that we're talking about the same positions, because it's a little confusing, maybe to someone who's newer to this newer to this, that like, the terminology is hard to track positions when you're going likes to likes, because they're called different things, but I think they're all in the same overall bucket. So that's helpful, Stacy, to know that that TA is sort of included in that. And then, Vinnie, if you want, maybe at the next capital subcommittee, we can kind of like, look over this a little more carefully, but it's it's hard, it's hard, I'm having a hard time tracking what's what's to what.
And it's one way to think about it is there's like the teachers, right? They're in the Hamilton Education Association, and then there's all those other people that work in the school that are not, but they don't all do the same job.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just saying, from a presentation standpoint, we seem to be calling similar positions three or four different things, and then the numbers that we're assigning to the additions are not always consistent. So I think this is more of a marketing presentation question as opposed to like a substantive Stacy question, so. I mean, we can, I can talk to Vinnie about that at Capital Subcommittee. My higher-level question for you, Stacy, is given that the sped department isn't really adding a lot of sped-specific people, but we're doing a lot of additions in these other places, do you do you think that that will have the necessary support factor to try to keep those out-of-district placements under control? Like, do you do you see that sort of earlier intervention as a way of keeping the sped budget down? Because we're not really adding that much to the sped budget really at all, but we are adding in other places. Do you feel like that approach is gonna have the net effect of trying to keep out-of-district under control?
I think it's gonna be a domino effect. I strongly believe, once we have a robust tiered system of support in place in the district, and we have a robust tier-two intervention component and tier-three, that we're going to see decreases in the referrals to special ed. We're gonna meet the needs of students much earlier on in a more targeted and specific and explicit way, which will then kind of decrease our overall special ed numbers. I think as we're continuing to work, because the other pieces we're looking at are we need a stronger social emotional learning component in the district. I think that's gonna have that that's gonna help some of our students we lose due to social, emotional, and behavioral concerns, because we can't support them in the district. So I I think as we're moving along, and we've got the right supports and systems in place, again, you know, we added the language-based program and the intensive learning program at the high school, and and we've we have students in those programs, and each year, the numbers are increasing in that program. So we're keeping students in district. We just have to continue to look at where we build additional supports, whether it's special ed programming or or other types of supports to really meet all of the needs of the students. In terms of the out-of-district, there's always gonna be students who need to go out-of-district for a variety of reasons, just because the public school setting can't meet their level of need, so that's always gonna be there. But I think moving forward, as we're building our structures, we're gonna start to see decreases in in the out-of-district placements.
Okay. Do you feel like, and I don't know if this is, I'm assuming it's something you guys talked about, but coming off of COVID, right, this really emotionally traumatic year for people, teachers and students alike, and assuming, you know, there's a lot of kids who evaluations are maybe either being delayed or not completed as thoroughly as in an ideal world, you'd want them to be, right? So there'll be that issue, and then just the fact that our our learning times are very variable, right? And we're gonna see that happening. So some kids are getting more time than other kids. So is there any thought that we need to increase our, I guess, two questions? Do we need to think about increasing our assessment capacity starting next year to sort of catch up with what could be an influx of assessments delayed or missed? And then the second question is, I know at one point there was conversation about having a social worker in the budget last year, I think that got cut. I'm wondering if there's any thought in light of both the trauma of COVID, family situation, job loss, and then of course, the fact that we've been living through a pandemic, sort of race riot, political turmoil. Is that something that, um, when you're talking about the holistic look of the student, which I really love? Has there been consideration that those things might come back into the budget at some point? Was that on the table at all?
Um, they didn't make it, it didn't fit into this budget. However, Kristin Lazaro and I, um, have started to initiate conversations about how do we, how do we look at the, the staff we have in terms of counseling? And how do we look at, can we provide supports in a different way? And so that's what we're looking at now. We have several counselors in the district. I, I think we'll be able to create a model to support our students now and into next year. The other thing we're looking at is who can we bring in as consults for some of our students who have some more significant emotional needs or mental health needs? So we're bringing, we want to bring in, I'll give you an example, OCD is an area where we're seeing an increase in students presenting with OCD. So we're trying to find, um, an outside expert to come in and consult and work with our school counselors. And, and also, you know, pull in our teaching staff who are working with these students and looking at like, how can we increase strategies and supports to better meet these students within the school setting? So we're looking at different things. It's, you know, professional development, increased supports. It's, um, what outside providers with expertise can come in. And again, looking at our staffing and how we can make shifts. I do want to say, because the comment on the evaluations, staff worked really, really hard. We had a number of evaluations coming off of the spring that didn't happen because we couldn't be in person. And so we had some staff who were doing evaluations over the summer to catch up. And, you know, staff were working overtime to get evaluations done through this year. We, we're caught up with last year and, and we're in a good place to, to this year. I think we do really good evaluations. Our staff are very thoughtful. Um, and, and so I believe they're, they're strong. I mean, we're always looking to improve in areas. And, you know, evaluations is, is an area that we need to look at, but, but we, we, our staff does really good work and I don't know, because we're low in referrals right now. I don't know, as we get into the spring, spring is usually a time of year where we see an increase in referrals for evaluations coming in. Because, you know, parents are concerned, um, about the shift to the next grade level. And, and, you know, there are some students who we get through this school year trying to put supports in place and then things might not, you know, go as quickly as, as parents or staff feel and they might send for referrals. So I don't know what the spring's going to look like. I anticipate an increase in the initial evaluations. And then again, next year is we could get an even higher number or we could stay stable to what we've been receiving.
Do you think there's, do you think the low number of referrals is at all a derivative of just the disparate class time? And kids are just not in front of their teachers as much as they would be under normal circumstances?
Um, I don't know, because we, we have referral, we have referrals that are coming in from the instructional support team. So, so teachers are seeing students and working with students. And if there's concerns, they're going to a team for consultation and collaboration before we get a referral. It's, it's the parent referrals that are the majority of what we get. And so on that end, it's less coming in from parent requests. There, there's different things. I think, you know, right now, the, the, our model, again, it may not work for some kids, but for others, it, it's working for them. Um, you know, they're in smaller groups. For some students, the flexibility to have the opportunity to learn in a remote setting works for them versus the in-person. So there's lots of variables. It's really hard to kind of nail it down because there's, again, there's so many variables and variances in what's happening.
No, it's just sort of counterintuitive. You think in a time where kids are, you know, objectively getting less structured learning, less observation time, parents are under stress, you would think that the opposite would be true, but I'm just sort of thinking it to the following. I mean, right now, we're sort of in a holding pattern and I, I acknowledge that the work is yeoman's work on every level and it's high quality. I'm just thinking, do we need to sort of build an, an additional layer of protection with the anticipation that kids will come back with either problems we're not seeing now? Things that happened over the summer. Parents are sort of, you know, I'm just, I'm a little worried about our re-entry on this front and our capacity to keep up. But, you know, if you think you can handle it, then that's, that's good.
We're continuing to monitor it. And again, I think things are changing from day to day. I could sit here and tell you, like, our numbers of referral requests are down. I could go into the office tomorrow and we could have a bundle from the, from the post office. So, you know, it can shift very quickly. We're continuing to monitor everything. And again, you know, what I said today could change next week. Or by the time we get to February third, which is the next, um, you know, review of the budget. Again, special ed is a moving target and it changes constantly. Even numbers are reported today, today that were from last week. It probably changed today. So, um, I think it's. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Stacy, two things. One, when we added the special ed hires last year, those were going to offset cost and contracted services. Did you keep track of that?
Yeah, we have our contracted services costs. We have, um, we also have, we have the, the, the money that was set for the salaries that are also offsetting what the final contracted services cost will be. I'm not concerned about, um, the BCBA services. I'm more concerned about the speech and language. And, and the reason I'm concerned about that is, um, we bought, we could not hire. And so we had tried and tried to try to hire our own person that we had actually offered the position, um, twice. But we did not get the contracted services in place. Right when we started school, there was a gap. So we have the contracted services set up for speech and language. Now we have to, we have, we owe compensatory services for the time between school starting and us getting a contracted service provider. It took time. We could get a company really quick, but then it was negotiating the staff and shifting staff and stuff. So so there's going to be an additional cost because of the compensatory that will kind of move us over. But right now, um, the contracted services lines are, are in an okay place. And again, we have the salaries that were accounted for for these positions. That's offsetting.
Another one, you're talking about doing this root cause analysis on the specific learning disability. Did you complete the root cause analysis last year that you were working on?
We, we did a good portion of it. Um, we have some, we have, we analyzed a group of out of district students and we went through like, what are the causes and really kind of peel down. So yeah, I think we have, we're in a decent place in terms of what we came out with. And there, there was variation and we had, the students we had polled were students that, um, we really questioned why did they land here in an out of district? Some of the factors, there were some, um, outside factors that came into play, but our, our direct in district factors, um, included not enough, um, social emotional support for some students. Their, their, their needs were not being met within the school setting. So they needed a higher level of programming. The others, there were some students that just were not moving forward academically. Um, and what we found was they had a disability category, but they were underlying diagnoses that, that weren't kind of considered in terms of looking at. Again, that's why I bring that whole child diagram now into the picture is there were some factors that led to not meeting their needs effectively and they landed, um, outplaced. In other cases, it was, it was a unilateral placement and again, outside coming in. So those, those are, and again, it, it was the effective support of the students and also a lack of programming. So, um, in some cases, we didn't have the programming in place. And so the alternative was they go out of district. We looked at the literacy piece and, um, there were some situations and not necessarily district related, but coming into the district with not a strong foundational literacy skills established. For example, this happened with, um, some homeschool and move in students and just the skills could not be made up quickly enough and the gap kept increasing for them. Trying to think, I actually, I think those were some of the, the, the bigger ones. Again, social, emotional and behavioral support was a big one for the students we looked at. And again, the academic component with some of them and just not making enough progress and the gap increasing. And then, um, the other pieces, and, and we continue to look at that was the evaluation process. So looking at some of the evaluations and what the results of the evaluations were, did not dig deep enough. And so we weren't appropriately programming to begin with. So.
You gave one test, got one set of results, but didn't give a follow-up whatever subcategory or something.
Not enough digging deeper in terms of skills.
Okay.
So, you know, and that's looking at what are we using for evaluation tools?
Right, right. Okay. It's like, um, it's like that's over. Um, oh, Dana did have something.
No, I didn't get a test to, um, I've, um, you guys all asked a lot of my questions, so you'll be happy. So I just had a question on the preschool enrollment numbers, which, um, so it looked like we were at 20 students and now we're at projecting for 10. So how does that relate? Because I guess it's a budget question really be, and it's a, because typically then you have peers that pay tuition, correct? So does that impact the number of peers, sort of much like the school choice? Does that then impact the number that we would anticipate to have?
Yeah. So I, I didn't dive deep into explaining each of the programs because I could be here forever just talking about special ed. But yeah, that's a good question. So looking at the preschool, our typical model for preschool, um, we do a ratio of seven special education students to eight typically developing peers. Last year, if you recall, we had to add a preschool, um, in November because of our special education numbers and in, you can't, you can't do waivers to have more than, um, the seven special education students. So we had to open a third preschool. We, we did really well in, in, in getting peers in last year and we were coming into this year with, with good peer numbers, but then COVID, we had to change the structure of, of the preschool program and we had to cap at 10 students because of space issues and things like that. If we go back next year into a normal model, our typical model, right now, looking at that number of 10, we can't, we, we wouldn't be able to support three classrooms. We have peers, because we just finished a peer screening. We have peers that, um, for this year did opted not to take a peer slot because of COVID. So we have about 12 families who would have been in our program this year, who are interested in coming back next year. So if we, we're, we're gonna, if we end up reducing classrooms, then yeah, our, you know, we're going to be limited to the numbers of peers we can bring in. But, you know, our preschool program is a special education program and it's, the model is built to support our students with disabilities. Turning three and giving them appropriate peer models. So again, we're looking at the numbers. We have our EI referrals, um, through June. Maureen Smith is working to try and get EI to give us an estimate of what they see beyond June for, um, EI referrals coming to us. So she's working on that. So once we get that number, we may be able to adjust the projection. Other factors are, we don't know who's moving in. Um, we don't know what children out there. Maybe didn't participate in EI, but they have some, some, you know, needs that, that may be appropriate for, uh, you know, a special education, um, preschool slot. So there's lots of different factors, but we're watching the numbers. Um, so yeah, it the number of, the, the, the number of classrooms is going to impact how many peers we can bring in. I think I gave you a very long answer, Dana. But yeah, you know, turn, it's, it's the, one of the things at the preschool is turning three happens throughout the year. So we're enrolling throughout the year. Kids turning three. Our typical year of increases throughout the year of students is between six and eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Stacy. It looks like we are now moving on to policy. We've got two policies. We had these at our previous meeting. So these are second readings. So do you want to talk about them quickly, Anna?
Michelle, could I just at this time also just thank our special ed staff? Remarkable work. And I know you two will be in early tomorrow morning, so feel free to move on. And, um, again, thank you to our team.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
Um, so for the policy, the first one, public comment, there were no changes coming out of our first reading. So it's back to you again, unchanged.
Dana, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Uh, is it, it's just to approve, correct? Or if it's not being changed.
Are we approving an inform policy working group?
I think the public comment one would be good to, again, correct me, I may not understand what you mean by inform, but I think the intention would be that this one would go live when we approve it. Is that the opposite of inform or what is inform mean?
Inform means that everything's being held and will be in a form that will then be approved in one big law.
I think my personal recommendation would be since we have existing conflicting policies, that I would make this one apply now to reconcile those conflicting policies, but that's just my personal opinion on it.
So is there?
We didn't, we didn't talk about that at the policy subcommittee specifically.
So is there a recommendation to remove one of those policies? If there were two, is there a recommendation to remove one?
Or would this create three?
This would supersede the other two. Those other two would go away and this would become the policy, I thought. Because it's the same topic later adopted, vetted by M A S C. So this would replace B two thousand two and two thousand ten.
That's the motion is that this, this, we are, is that the motion is to replace? Is that the motion?
I think that just happens, doesn't it? When we, when we.
No.
Put in, it's superseded.
Is this an existing number that we're updating or is this a new number?
There, there are two, there are two existing numbers, same topic. One is B two thousand two, one is B two thousand ten. B two thousand ten was later than B two thousand two. So this would be later to that still, same topic, but it's under a different format. The new, um, M A S E version of it is B E D H, I think we call it.
Yeah, that's right.
So we have an issue.
So yeah, so yeah, I'm with Michelle. I think we, we would need to put this in under our old no, you know, naming or nomenclature and then make a movement to remove the two other ones. So, you know, I mean, so, because even though, you know, because while that, the newest policy is is the one that we should be using, uh, leaving those other two sort of floating in space. You know, it could cause confusion down the line.
So would we remove two thousand two and two thousand ten entirely and then replace them with this new document, which we would call something other than B E D H? Is that what you're saying? Like whatever the next.
And, and, and I don't think, I think we could, we could approve this first. And then, you know, in two minutes, just say, we're going to remove the other two. You know, I mean, it could all happen right now. I think it's just a
Got it.
A little, uh, a little housekeeping.
Yeah, let's call it B two thousand, whatever the first number was.
Well, so there's the first existing number.
Yeah.
B two thousand two is the first current public. B two thousand two is the first current public comment policy on the books.
Alright, so let's call this one that number.
This would replace that in our, in our current books.
Yeah, and then then we'll improve in form the one that you have the number for. Which is the B E D or whatever you just said.
So that's this one.
What number did you say?
It's B E D H. But if we improve it in form, don't we want it to actually be live now? And that's kind of confusing.
That's why we're doing the
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I, I don't mean to keep talking over you, Michelle.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, like it's weird, David. You and I are like mentally connected.
I, I think my objective would be that we tidy house and make this current policy that we've all talked about now the real current active one and the one and only one that we refer to.
Make sure that it comes in with the new batch of stuff that we're coming in in form.
We're gonna have to solve that problem with how to update the online policy manual, which has not been done in forever because everything's in form right now.
Sounds like a technical problem that we can solve.
So Anna, give us the, the number of the second policy. Be what?
The one we want to get rid of? Two thousand ten. B two thousand ten is guidelines for public comments.
Okay, so. Alright, Dana. Three things need to happen. Need to approve this policy to be number B two thousand two. We need to revoke two thousand, B two thousand ten. And we need to approve this exact same policy to be approved in form and well, bed H, B E D H.
So moved.
Do you want, yeah, was that a so moved? Are we good? Yeah, so moved.
Yeah, I think my Haley could put that together. I'll second it.
Great. Okay, so David's gonna second it. Okay. So do people feel that that's one big motion? Yes, we'll vote one time unless people have questions.
As you say, does people, do people feel comfortable with that one big motion?
I do. I just want to make, I just want to be, I just want to make sure I totally understand that. So even though we're proving it quote unquote in form and we're also replacing B two thousand two. So it's essentially being approved in forum and going live at the same time.
Correct. And so it automatically goes right in, but we make sure it doesn't get lost in the shuffle when the new stuff comes in, whenever that comes in.
Okay. Have to make sure Dorothy understands because she's the one who's keeping that. I'm sure she does, but.
I think she would, yeah. Okay. In that case, I totally understand and I think that makes sense.
Okay, so we can vote. David, you're at the bottom, so you get to go first.
Yes.
Some reason Julia, you changed locations since the last time we voted, so Julia.
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Del Horgan?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Phil Bailey, yes. Alright. Now you have another one.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, sorry, I got it. Yeah. So the other one is, um, was weapons and that was also no change from the last time that we were here.
Alright, Dana, give us a motion. Oh, Mary Beth had something she wants to say.
Just one thing, uh, you asked me to check in with council regarding the weapons policy and there was a comment that you may want to consider adding the police as an exception to this rule.
Right, you did say that. Okay, thank you. Do you want us to take it back to policy again and put that in, or do you want to do it right here in this meeting?
I think we can put that in. But we have to know where, so.
That's why I'm wondering if it should go back.
I think I'd be more confident with it coming back to us.
Okay, go backwards, Smith, bring it back.
We could mess it up and actually have it be a policy that police aren't allowed in the building. I mean, what could possibly go wrong?
Okay, so, so we'll pull this one back, um, for policy. So then, Michelle, just make sure I get this right. When it comes back again here, is it a second reading again, third reading, first, second reading again?
Alright, chairs report. Okay, few things to report. Yesterday was quite a day. So first, um, Anna and I attended the Wenham Board of Selectmen meeting, maybe some of the rest of you did. Um, at which point, um, within the first thirty minutes, uh, we went from having three selectmen to having one, um, as there were two resignations. Today, the remaining member Gary Cheeseman has put out a statement and then he also spoke to the Wenham Fincom. It is the town's intention to still have their town meeting on May first. They are working through the legal process for doing that. So we should just believe, you know, Hamilton's going forward on May first anyway, but we just should, um, keep on target that that's going to be happening. Then, Michelle, Horgan and I made an appearance over at the Hamilton Board of Selectmen's meeting where they were discussing the regional agreement, which, um, as you may recall, we did say this is something that we're like in the fall, but they wanted to get their ideas out. Um, and as has been discussed previously, violent agreement that nomination papers should be handled by the town clerks. They're interested in talking about how the makeup of the committee is designated, um, how the budget is allocated. The idea that there, we might just allocate it based on population, like humans um, came up because that would be more stable than children. There was some discussion, which was contradictory, like maybe we should, uh, get rid of the clause that says there has to be a school in each town and then that would allow us to eliminate Buick. But then there was also conversation about maybe only Wenham kids should go to Buick because it's in Wenham and only Hamilton kids should go to the other schools, which was whatever. And then there was talk about, um, requiring a capital plan and O P E B in the, uh, regional agreement. So those are things that those are just their ideas floating around. And we should just know that. And the last thing is Brett Hill. Well, he was kind of scheduled to come tonight, but kind of not because I told him it was yesterday, so that was my fault. But also, he, he, he wasn't ready to come because the governor's budget was supposed to be out on the, on yesterday timeframe and it didn't. And that's all fun. So he will be coming to our next meeting. I asked him to address, um, chapter seventy and how the enrollment will be happening when he comes to give us an update on the current year's budget and the next year's budget. And then, um, also, I asked him to look into, um, that pool testing, you know, if there's going to be additional funding, because right now there's only funding for the first six weeks. Um, so that will be in two weeks. If there's anything else you would like for him to address, if you can just let me know and I'll shoot it over to him. Uh, now superintendent gets to give her a report on some very exciting news. And Julia gave us a preview of this earlier today in email.
Nice. So, um, I just have a couple pictures that I'll, I'll quickly share with you that, um, show you what our K one classes are looking like. Um, so let me just put that on. Give me a quick minute. So just you, so you can see what our, our schools are currently looking like. This, this is an example. Go back. At Cutler School, um, one of the things that happened at Cutler School is that the library was emptied out to make a classroom, so they have relocated the library um, at the lobby when you first walk in. So a lot of creative thinking going on there. Um, this is a classroom that is at Winthrop, so you get a sense of what, what is, what it's looking like with a full class of students in a particular classroom. This has a taller number of students, so we were able to maintain this particular classroom within a regular type of classroom. This is Cutler, um, and, and this school, one of the classes, we needed a, a larger space could be contained in a regular classroom, so they, um, reconfigured their cafeteria. Um, you can see some, some of the creative ways in which they've, um, put a curtain across the stage. They've brought in technology. If you go along the side, there are lots of whiteboards for kids to engage in. Um, and so there, there's really been a remarkable effort on the part of our teachers and our educators to think about what warm inviting and, uh, educationally appropriate spaces look like. And they have worked just remarkably hard to put those together. This is the transformation of the Buick cafeteria. The school committee may recognize in the back there, those tables that you have sat at with the beautifully, beautiful, um, blue aprons on the front. They have been reconfigured as, um, material, uh, spaces for our students. Um, what you can't see in the picture over in the right hand corner, they have created a little reading note for students. So again, an example of how our teachers have just shown a remarkable amount of creativity and thoughtfulness around how to make larger, more common spaces into an intimate setting. And then finally, this is the, the Buick Gymnasium. And again, you can see the thoughtfulness that was created here, that, that what you see around the edges there are actually gym bats that are being supported to create an environment that feels more again, intimate and appropriate for classroom setting. Um, a lot of the technology is that kind of the, the room, as you can see, is sitting, um, but you can get a sense of the remarkable amount of instruction materials that were moved to these settings. Their materials that are in their desk. And so overall today, the report is that things went very well. We have a couple of issues that we still need to work out. Um, in some of these larger environments, we are using what's called a red cat system, the helpless sound. We have, we have a couple of teams to work out around that. Some of those systems were not working quite as well as we had anticipated. So that is one problem that we're still trying to solve. We also had some traffic flow issues, particularly at Winthrop that, that will need a little working out. But overall, we, we had a very successful day in welcoming our youngest students back to four days of in-person learning. And again, I, I want to recognize both the building administrators and our teachers and our teaching assistants and our custodians, Tom Gary. Um, there was, this was a remarkable team effort to make this happen and we are delighted to have our youngest students back in school. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that. Um, and if there are none, I'll move on to my next item.
I, I do have a couple of questions. Is it okay if I? I, I've been hearing from teachers inviting the school committee to come in and take a look in person what is happening. The teachers that, that have been talking to me don't paint as, as rosy as a picture is what's being shown here. Especially when it comes to cleaning.
But what I would say, Peter, if there is something related to cleaning that anybody is sharing a concern about, they should send that concern directly to Tom Gary and he will look into that. That would be the, the, the mechanism. And Tom, I know you're on the, the line here. Do you want to, I speak? Because as far as I understand, there have been, um, I think one concern raised this year about cleanliness that was addressed, um, fairly immediately. But, um, Tom, are you getting large concerns related to cleaning at this? My understanding is that that is not the case.
I'm, I'm just wondering why, why they're, why there's a disconnect then from teachers telling me one thing to them not reporting it. I don't know if there's a.
Uh, yeah, Peter, I, I would really ask that you, you know, tell the teachers, reach out directly to me. Via email or my cell phone, nine seven eight seven six seven zero six seven zero. Jump right, I jump right on the issue. Um, so.
Again, they, they, they're not criticizing the custodians. That, what they're saying is the custodians, you know, are overworked. We just don't have the numbers we need to keep that promise of keeping the teachers safe and the kids safe by keeping it clean.
I think what Tom is saying is if he doesn't know where the issue is, he can't address it. So he, someone needs to contact him and let him know where it is.
Yeah, okay. I just don't know why they're, they're not comfortable approaching the administration. I feel like.
Anybody away that had a concern. And I think the more eyes, uh, the better. And I, I address any issue if it comes to me.
Of course, if it's a teacher and they're uncomfortable, they can always go to the union and have the union bring that anonymously. It's not a problem.
I see. And, um, and do you feel, I mean, one of the other things that they were saying, they, it's, it's a lot more crowded now than what was being pictured. You know, one of the descriptions was, you know, it's like kids, it's like cars piling up at a toll booth every time you go to the door. Every time you do something, you know, it's like a toll booth, cars back up, kids back up, they get close. They, they, they can't maintain their physical distancing.
Is that from the, the first day, Peter? Um, because I, you know, what I would anticipate is that the very first time you have larger group of kids together, you're going to have some, some problem solving, right? And you're going to see where kids are having difficulty, for example, lining up to go to recess or washing their hands. Um, and there may be some, some initial problems that teachers are, are challenged by.
This was pre, pre today. This was, you know, just with the, in the already hybrid model with not all the kids in. They were saying that already it was a challenge to keep kids separated. And their concern was by putting all the kids in, it would exasperate the, that problem that already exists.
And did they report that to their principals?
I don't, I, I can't answer that. I, I, I just know that, that's what they're telling me. I cannot tell you if they've been reporting it. I can't tell you if they haven't, why they haven't. Um, I don't know why they, they just feel safe telling me these things and you can infer that they don't feel safe reporting it. I just don't know. I just, I'm, I am passing on what I'm hearing to the whole committee.
Yeah, Peter, if you would feel comfortable too, I mean, sharing with either the superintendent or me, um, you know, the people that have concerns or happen.
I would, I would never do that.
I mean, Tom can't address it if he doesn't know even what building it's in, but he can't address a problem he doesn't know where it is.
I would never name names, that's for sure. Um, but I would encourage them, yeah, talk, talk to, we, talk to the principal, talk to Tom Gary, talk to the union. And if, then can still, still tell things to me because I would never betray that trust.
Dana, did you have something you wanted to say?
I have a question about that, Peter, because I I guess I had the expectation and I thought I'd, that if we were getting feedback from teachers that we would be sharing that information with other school committee members.
Well, it wasn't an email.
Last week shared that, or whenever that was, like, she got a, the, you know, the letter and she shared it with us. And if you're, like, I'm a little bit uncomfortable hearing the first time in a meeting that you're getting all kinds of letters from people.
No, no, I didn't say letters. I just said feedback. Um, I'm having conversations on the streets. I'm having conversations in supermarkets. Do you want me to report every conversation? Am I supposed to type up a transcript and report every, every dialogue? Do you want me to report every conversation? Am I supposed to type up a transcript and report every, every dialogue that I have? Is that what's expected of me as a school committee member?
I didn't say that.
No, I'm just, that's what I'm asking because that's, that's what's happening. It's, it's not appearing in my email box there. It's feedback that I'm getting.
It's informal conversations. You're not getting.
Right. So that's what I'm, and I, and I'm passing it on to the school committee now.
So it would be good if you could get those people to communicate that to Tom and Mary Beth, or if you could communicate that to Mary Beth before a meeting, so she has a chance to investigate it and see if there's an issue. That would be really helpful as, and you know, what I would offer is that if you get that kind of feedback, there'd be one of two ways people could handle it. They could share directly with their concern with Tom, or if they could share their concern with their principal. Or if they didn't feel comfortable doing either of those two things, they can go to their union and the union can make us aware of the situation. That way, we, we know about the problem and we can do our very best to address it. We certainly want people to be in clean environment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Mary Beth and for Tom. The, the request we got about the feasibility of bringing other grades back and really doing that hard measurement room by room that we received with a lot of sort of detail. Can either one of you address the feasibility of that request and what that might mean for bringing grades two through five back in person in some whole or part?
Can that, that's sort of outside of this topic, but we can talk about that at the end of the meeting as a topic for the next meeting.
One, just wondering, since we got the request and it's sort of looking at classrooms and spaces, if, if that's something that is on the horizon about the plan to bring other grades back.
We have done what those people had asked us, that we have done a study. I, I'm curious if they had reviewed those documents. Get in touch with us and let us know.
I was referring to the email that we got from them yesterday, the day before. I think we all got it, where they asked for a very specific room by room measurement. It was in more, more in depth than what was done over the summer, including the offer to either help with the measurements, fundraise for the measurements. I'm just curious to know if that's something that either Mary Beth or Tom has on their radar to do to help move that all forward.
So why don't we give them a chance to think about that? We can talk about it at our next meeting or?
Yeah, I mean, I can say generally, we, there, there were incredibly detailed measurements taken by Tom and every classroom looked individually with Tom and the building administrator. So we were looking not only at the space piece, but the educational programming. If the committee would like, we'd be happy to report out again on those, those numbers, but that work has already been done.
So the idea of remeasuring is not something we feel like we need to do.
That, again, that work has been done. And I don't know, Tom, do you want to just speak briefly about the level of detail you engaged over the summer in getting those measurements?
Sure. As I reported out to the committee during the summer, each and every space was visited by me accompanied with each building principal. All three elementary principals visited all three elementary schools together. But we could not only take the measurements, right, because that would be easy enough for me to just take our building plans and blueprints and do takeoffs off of, right? Getting actually into each classroom, seeing how the space is used, seeing what the egresses are, HVAC devices was all taken into consideration. It was a arduous process and helped inform our planning, you know, for late August to start the school year off. The process would take a while and I just wonder if it would be the best way to spend resources right now versus looking forward, hopefully towards a vaccination program, where by the time we finish the work, report out, it may be a moot point. So.
I'm not, do you want to talk about dates on vaccines?
I didn't intend to have a segue for Mary Beth, but it just coincided on.
So one of the things that I think we're all anxious about is when we're going to see COVID vaccines. We've been informed by our nursing staff is that the, the state is saying that they are updating the when will I know when I can get the vaccine site twice a week? So if you go on, the latest piece is that they have shifted the timeline from teachers. If all the initial timeline was from February to April, it is now showing up from February to March. Teachers are in tier two. There's a number of categories in tier two. For to be exact, teachers are in the second category that will be receiving the vaccine within that February to March time period. So we do not yet have a specific solo, but happy to say that the members are looking, the dates are looking better than they were. And we will continue to monitor this site and hopefully have some more concrete information as to when our teachers will be getting the vaccine. But it does, based on what is posted as of today, it is looking better than it was in the past and closer to that February mark than the April mark. In fact, April has been one more from the potential time. And so we are monitoring that. The other piece that has changed since the last meeting, you may remember that the governor had signed in orders that flu vaccines were required for all students in the district. That, that order has been rescinded. There's not been a lot of cases with, of flu because of the mask wearing and that type of thing. So that is something that we are no longer required to, to provide as a district. So I wanted to give you those two updates and let you know that we will be continuing to monitor the timelines for the vaccines. Any questions about that?
Is there, I'm not sure if this is something that would come up in negotiations. Is there any discussion about teachers or anyone who doesn't want to get a vaccine? Does that have any, we obviously can't control that. I mean, that's a personal decision and I support that. But is there a notion that we have to have a certain threshold of people who have received the vaccine in order to start talking about other changes to our learning plans? And, and I guess sort of the second part of that is, so you're saying the, the hindrance to bringing more elementary kids back is vaccination. At what level then do we need to have had vaccination present in order to start that conversation? Are you saying it's after a certain percentage of teachers, all the teachers, like what's the, when do we roll into the next phase? If vaccination is the roadblock, then how much vaccination do we need before we can entertain the next question of how do we get more of the kids back in person?
Yeah, so again, that, what, the primary roadblock right now is we are working with the six feet of social distancing. We believe that as the vaccine rolls, you know, two things can happen, vaccine can roll out. And the other piece is that we are seeing very, very high COVID infection rates right now. You know, what, what is happening with them is the second piece that I think is going to be important in this equation. The first thing that we are doing or in, or in the process of sending out to our teachers is to ask them who is going to get the vaccine. We need that, one, to be able to place the order and to know how many people will be asking for it. And then two, to get a sense, do we have an issue where we have a large number of people that are not interested in getting the vaccine? Or do we have a pretty high rate in terms of what people, how many people are getting, getting it? Then once that data comes back, that will be a, a new piece of information that we have. We are again hoping that this is updated and we're going to know within the next couple of weeks when that will occur. And then I, I do think that that starts to open up the ability to have conversations about, okay, what, what would things look like with these circumstances. So it, it's, it is sequential. We're trying to get certain pieces of information in place. But with the, when we have a timeline for vaccination, when we know how many of our staff are actually going to be taking the vaccination, then, then we can start talking about what could this look like going under. And, you know, one of the things that's, that we also all hope is that the, the current very, very high of infection are going to slow down and that is going to be another consideration.
Is there any other way that more elementary kids would come back without a vaccination? Like even just grade two, is there any, what's, is there any plan to get more kids back without a vaccination?
Right now, that is the approach we're taking because we have done the studies in terms of face in the rooms and that we are, we are not able to bring all of a grade back in, with the current conditions, keeping the six feet. We, we have discussed that there are pockets, there are, you know, one or two places in different grade levels where the, we, we could bring that particular class back, not the grade level, but just that particular class. But, but that doesn't seem like a, an approach that makes a lot of sense. And so we are, we are looking to move forward with planning for a, what we hope is not too far distant eventuality, that we will be able to bring students back and start to shrink that social distancing piece. So that is, that is the way that we are planning right now. That seems to make the most sense. And so that, that, that is where we are right now. Want to talk about free COVID testing? The other, you know, the other piece that has been a lively topic of conversation of late is the COVID pool testing that was announced by the governor a week ago Friday, last Friday. So once that was announced, our team attended a webinar to learn more about it. And what we're seeing is that there, there are certainly benefits to pool testing, but there's some questions and we definitely need more information. There is another webinar taking place this Friday to give us additional detail. I'll, I'll offer some of the high level pieces and then Tom, I'll ask you to, to jump in with, with further detail. But one, one of the things that's becoming clear is that there is a lot of capacity issues that, and staffing that would be required by the district in order to engage in the testing. We know our nurses are stretched about as thin as they possibly can be, and so we have a question about capacity there. We also have a question about after the six weeks are up, there would be a fairly significant financial impact, about $10,000, $100,000 to get to the end of the school year if we were to continue with it. And then thirdly, in order to have a student participate in this testing, we need permission from a parent, so we would have to figure out how to get permission out and signed by all parents and back. We, we may have many parents that decide that they don't want their child participating in this weekly testing. That's not something that we can predict. But that is a concern I know from talking to other colleagues that, that I have regarding this particular testing. So this is one with the levels and the details and we, we definitely need more information. Again, more forthcoming on Friday. We have sent in the, the form for the state, letting them know that we are interested in continuing to this is an option. And hence, we have been invited to the next webinar. With that high level kind of overview, Tom, do you want to add any additional details? I know you've been on in several of those webinars.
Sure, sure. I mean, just for anybody that hasn't, just to start, you know, with the basics is that each, you know, we, we'd have to separate out classrooms or groups of people, pools, right? So we would be either administering swab testing or students would self swab and put them in a vial and then they're batched together and looked at. From there, the, if a positive test comes from that pool, follow-up testing has, takes place and that is through an antigen test, which is one of the, the rapid tests. I, I'm sorry, I think, I mean, you covered a lot of it, Mary Beth, so I'm trying to figure out if there were any holes. You know, one thing we found is they were looking at it's about $5 per test. Not, and so we estimated around 10,000 a week to cover all of our staff and students. Is there anything you'd like to, for me to elaborate on, Mary Beth? I mean, I'm not sure. I could answer any questions if the committee has questions. I'm just.
Yeah, I would just say, Tom, today that my district posted three positions to do this testing, like three temporary positions for six to eight weeks to like do the testing and administer the testing, monitor the results, contact. So they're like actually hiring people to do it. So it seems like quite an undertaking. So, you know, I don't know. Anna?
I guess two questions. So if the logistical challenge is too much for our existing staff, that was sort of one of my questions, could we use funding from the state or from covert really funding or stimulus funding? So the governor sort of alluded to that in their announcement that we would have additional funding coming in that we could use for these temporary hires. Is that something that we would consider doing?
Yes, it's, you know, that would be a question that I would want to put in front of the committee. Because there, you know, we, we are fully anticipating getting some additional stimulus funds. We have not been informed of our, our exact allocation at this moment. But everything is an opportunity cost, right? So if you spend money on that, you can't spend money on this. Just a, a quick example of something that, that we've thought about is this summer running a literacy to try to give kids additional.
I'm sorry, Mary Beth, I can't hear you over my halo. My halo, do you mind muting yourself?
But we wouldn't mind seeing that little baby again, maybe at the end.
I'm sorry, Mary Beth, can you go back to whatever you said at the start of that sentence?
About opportunity cost. So there, there will definitely be additional stimulus money coming. And one of the things that, that we could decide is that we want to put that towards pool testing. But there, there are other ways in which we may want to use that money. So if we use it for pool testing, we can't necessarily use it for something else. A quick example of how else we might use that money is like a, a six-week literacy camp during the summer where students can come in and get additional instruction for students that we identify that are having challenges. You know, stimulus money could potentially pay for something like that. So do you want to do that? Or do you want to do pool testing? Like, there will be, I think, a series of questions once we know what the allocation is.
Are we gonna, are we gonna know what that allocation might be within the timeframe the state's offering the testing? Because the tape, the state does have sort of a timeframe, they're willing to front the costs and after that, we would be on our own.
Yeah, so there's, there's two questions about cost related. So one, yes, I do think that we are going to have a number within the next couple of weeks in terms of what the stimulus package that has been signed off on will, will provide for this district. So I, I do think that number is forthcoming relatively quickly. The, so, and then there would be two questions related to pool testing, hiring people. Even when the district, when the state is providing you the test, we would need more staff, right? And then if we want to continue past the six-week time period, then we would be looking at the additional staff and the cost of the testing. And what we know the cost of the testing is estimated to be, is as Tom said, about $5 per person, which comes out to about 10,000 a week, and we would anticipate about 10 weeks left of school.
But that would be only if we chose to continue it after the six-week coverage ended. So theoretically, we could use the free testing for a period to get us through, you know, if the, if the projections about vaccinations that you just talked about hold true, right? There's a convergence there where in the next six weeks, we could get through the testing, then potentially get to this vaccination period. So is that a decision? I guess I'm, I guess my thought is like, I definitely have strong opinions on that. And I'll offer that I have a strong opinion, we should participate no matter what, because it seems like now is the crucial time to get as much health and support we can to make people feel comfortable. My other question would be, is that? My other question would be, is that, you know, we have a lot of parents who have different connections and I'm even seeing someone in the chat here, but my, my question was going to be, we have a lot of healthcare people who might be willing to volunteer. So maybe we wouldn't necessarily have to have, but there are a lot of nurses and doctors and people who I'm sure would help volunteer swab supervision. I myself did a self swab a few weeks ago and I was certainly not supervised by a medical person or a nurse. So I just would suggest that to me, this is a great moment to think creatively and flexibly and nimbly and do whatever we can to get people feeling healthy and safe. And again, everyone knows my objective is to try to get more kids back sooner than later. And if this is a measure that we could use to help get more kids back in the building, I think we should employ every possible avenue. So.
So, Horgan?
Um, Mary Beth, has anybody asked the teachers how they feel about the pool testing? You know, will, will it give them a sense of security or are they, what, what's their read on it?
Yeah, I think part of, part of what we need to be able to do is to talk to people about what it is, right? And what it's going to look like and what we're going to get back for data. And we just don't have enough information yet. After the, the Friday webinar, I would anticipate that we will have enough information to say, this is what it's going to look like. And then we would, would sit down with the union and, and talk with them about that as well. Because teachers would be part of the pool testing as part of this endeavor. So that is, that is a conversation we would intend to have. But really where we are right now is that we need more information. We just don't know enough to be able to make a, an informed decision. So that in the next round of information is coming out this Friday.
Tom?
Yeah, it does. I, I, I think on the initial interest call, it sounded like the perfect solution, but as, you know, Superintendent Baneos alluded to, I mean, the devil is in the details with these programs. And we just want to make sure that if we're going to sign up for it and we're going to undertake it, that we execute it, you know, 100% accurate, right? Like that we're dead on with everything we do.
And I will share with you, this has been a point of conversation with superintendents across the state. It's running about 50/50 right now in terms of what people are thinking in terms of it making sense.
Peter?
Uh, just a quick question I see in the chat. Could parents or community members volunteer if they, you know, were to be cleared?
So again.
I have that written down in my notebook for Friday's webinar, because I wanted to get that.
Yeah, because I imagine some things have to be medical, some people don't, you still have to get FBI fingerprinting.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of the districts that have undertaken it already. Everybody seems to be doing it in a different way. Some are doing it drive up, doing it through the car window. Some are going around on a cart through the schools and doing it. There's, there's just different approaches and kind of want to hear all of the best practices. And, you know, some of the stories from the other districts that have learned from some mistakes, I want to hear those too, so we don't repeat them.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. I don't know if you can see me, Michelle.
I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Um, so how, how many people are in a pool? And how do they draw that pool? Because the thing that concerned me, the thing that jumped out to me was if a pooled test result is positive, then all individuals in the pool must quarantine until they're all tested individually. So if my daughter is in a random pool with people that are not, I'm, I would assume they'd be close contacts, but I don't know. And she would, that, that to me jumps out because it's sort of like, well, if she's in a pool with 25 people and somebody tests positive, then she has to quarantine for, for two weeks. So maybe this is a question for the webinar, to be honest. But when I read what Desi put out, that jumped out at me. So I just.
I, I do, we do pools, pool testing in my district. And the way it happens is if someone does end up coming positive, it actually, the way it works, it narrows it down to like a couple of people.
But how?
And then it goes back, excuse me?
How do they narrow it down from?
It's with, it's with the rapid test. So Julia, you don't have to wait for the two weeks. The rapid test comes back. So if you have a pool and anyone in the pool tests positive, then everyone in that pool does the rapid test, which is not, you know, does not have a two-week incubation. You don't have to wait. So that's a quick turnaround test. Then if someone's positive from that, okay, when I have, and it, you know, now you have a result. If someone's still negative, there is a potential for false negatives. But if someone is symptomatic and has a negative, that might be when then you go and get a PCR test and quarantine, because there is potentially an instant race of hulks negative. However, you know, what I understand about the science is that it's going to catch more than it's going to miss. I mean, right now we're not testing anything. So you wouldn't have to quarantine for two weeks. You'd have to do the, the rapid test, which is what the state's providing. Those are the, the quick $5 tests. Then you have to rate on those results. So it's not, it's not a two-week quarantine.
Yeah, Julia, what I can say is it, what it does is it maximizes a PCR test, right? So for every, you know, one test that you'd be giving, you're getting 20 tests in one, you're narrowing the pool down.
Yeah.
Then going with the antigen test and from there.
I, I also want to say, I think, I think it would be valuable if it would give peace of mind to the community that schools are not super spreaders. So I'm completely on board if we can make it work. But I do know that we have more questions that need answering. So thank you. And thanks, Mary Beth Ting. She knows. My daughter had to quarantine.
As always.
Every day. Thank you.
Yeah. And it just, again, a shout out to our nurses, our nurses.
They're amazing.
We should probably have a, you know, how you have like birthday parties or like retirement parties. Actually, we should probably have a retirement party for the nurses when they retire from taking care of COVID. That's what we should do.
Our school nurses and we, as we know, Mary Beth Ting plays a dual role and shout out to Rachel Lee as well as he is a public health nurse.
We'll burn all the PCPs in a big bonfire. Okay. Capital planning finance, do you have anything to report?
Nope, we're just meeting again on the 25th, next Monday, working through the budget.
Policy, do you have anything to report?
No, we met recently, we're meeting again, not for a while, March 4th, 5th, I think is the date we set. So it will be a time before we come back, but we're working our way through with Dorothy and we'll bring weapons back around. So. So far so good.
Negotiations?
We met last week, we're continuing to meet. So I guess that's it.
Tomorrow.
Well, we are meeting tomorrow and then we, and then again next week. Yes.
And David, I told Dana already, but we're not, I'm not going to be there. There's going to be a death in our family tomorrow. So. Very, very, very traumatic here at the Bailey House. Okay. We have a consent agenda, which includes warrants and one set of minutes and a, what do you call those? A donation. Does anybody want to hold any of those items?
Can we hold the donation to acknowledge it?
We can. Great. So we're holding C. Give us something for everything else.
Uh, I move that we approve the consent agenda, parts A and B as presented. And no changes shall be made.
Great. Any second from that? Second, second by Anna. Great. Roll call will be, Julia, you moved to the end for some reason. So.
Oh, yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Michelle Berry, yes.
Um, okay. Dana, do you want to do the, um, thank you for the donation?
You're on mute. Dana, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, so we just have a motion first, right? I move that we accept the donations to the winter elementary school as presented in the exhibit.
Oh, I've never seconded anything. So I was just jumping at the, jumping the gun. I never have, never get a second in time, but I'm sorry, did I do it too early?
No, it was good. It was like your first basket. Um, and who? Who's donating?
Um, so I just wanted to acknowledge it. Um, it looks like the, and I apologize to either family if I mess up your names. The Mimo family or Memo family donated $500 to help purchase a large screen monitor for classroom use. And the Ivanello, I, I own Vanello family donated four air purifiers at an estimated value of over $2,500, which is a pretty notable donation for an individual family. But it does, it does raise the question for me also, are these air purifiers seem something that we could use any money from our PPE budget for? Are those things that perhaps we should be purchasing in other buildings? Tom, I don't know if that's something that's helpful. It sure seems like a good idea and.
We just finished the thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, that's my thank you, but.
Great. Thank you to the families.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Um, and we do need to do the approval. I mean, with the vote.
Great. Okay. So let's vote and then we can, uh, Julia?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Peter?
Yes, and thank you.
Dana?
Yes.
So, Horgan?
Yes.
Anna?
Very much. Yes. Thank you.
So Bailey, yes. Okay. So let's do, so let's do topics for future agenda and we can put that on it. Okay. So first, um, tomorrow I will send all of you a link to a Google form where you can put in your name, the topic and some like information about the topic. That will feed in the, to a Google spreadsheet, which you will have access to see. And you can see then when we schedule it for a meeting. So there'll be a column where there'll be a date. I've tested it and it seems to work that when you submit it, I, I and Michelle Horgan will get an email so that we'll know to go in to see the topic. So that when we meet with Mary Beth, we'll know to put in a date for scheduling. Um, so I'm wondering, we got this idea from talking to another school committee chair. It's been a way that they've, they have like a bigger committee. So there's a lot more people on it. It's been a way for them to organize and to keep a running list of the things that are topics that are being addressed, like in the next meeting. Like, you know, if there was policy, something that needed to get approved or whatever, it would be right there. And we would just be able to approve it. Um. How does that sound? If, because that way, everybody will be able to see all of the topics and when they're going to be coming up. And also like if it's, um, policy, right? You can say, you know, here are the, whatever, the documents. And so Janelle also could pull them off the exhibits easier. We're just trying to think of ways to streamline and everybody be able to see them.
I know, I would appreciate being able to see what everybody wants to, future topics. That's a helpful, helpful thing for me. I would appreciate being able to see that. So, yeah.
And then also allows like, let's say I submit something, right? It lets you guys, like, the rest of you could be like, uh, no, or yeah. And I have some more information to contribute to that kind of thing.
What if we like plus one it or something? So if we just like say, like, if someone submits something, I say, I'm not going to say like, no, I don't want it. But if I'd say, yes, I really agree that this should be elevated.
Well, I have a concern about open.
Spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Second column where you could just put plus one and then the next person could put plus one into the spreadsheet.
Isn't that an open meeting law violation though? I mean, aren't we starting to?
That's fair about what do you want on an agenda? It's organizing an agenda. So.
And so I guess my question, one, I still want to be able to voice things in open meetings. So the public can hear the things that we're voicing, because otherwise it's going back into this sort of secretive rabbit hole, which I don't like. Um, I don't mind doing it. It seems like a, a little bit of work to make more work, but I'm happy to try it out. You know, if you think it would be helpful, but I'd still like the opportunity to voice things publicly. I guess one question I have on a general level is, there's a couple of things I had requested and one of them we're working through. But I'm curious to know about the timeline for other agenda requests. I haven't heard back on those other ones. And I'm wondering, you know, what's the process for sort of when those things get added? And when we can bring that back up again, um, because that has been a bit of a sticking point on other issues. So I just don't want to create a new place where we then spar in a spreadsheet as opposed to email versus the meeting. Like, it seems a little cumbersome, but I'm willing to try it if you think it would be helpful.
Yeah, he seemed, he, he said that this had really helped them and, and, and they have a slightly bigger group. I think they had nine or 10.
I think, or 10, nine, nine. I'm wondering, Michelle, if we could share the screen in, in another document, the screenshot to, so people have a visual as to what he was talking about.
Yep.
Well, I think we can't discuss it or like you said, maybe I can't say I have extra information. But Anna, is it okay? And this is just my ignorance and Michelle, if I, if I say, yes, I want to, I want to second this, I want to elevate this. I don't know.
You want, you can say, you could say, yes, I want to discuss it. Um, you can't say, yeah, I think we should approve that.
Okay, okay.
Or wow, that sounds like exactly what I think we need. You can't say that.
Right. I would just say, this looks like a very good topic.
Nope.
For the agenda.
This looks like a topic we should discuss.
This looks like an appropriate topic for the agenda or this looks like a topic we should discuss.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Yep. Oh, no, I'm learning. And, uh, Michelle, was that you that dropped off those binders?
Have, um.
The school committee reminders, because they're amazing.
The what reminders?
The binders.
Oh, yes. You're welcome.
Okay. I don't know. Someone dropped off mysterious school community binders at my house and they were very helpful. So thank you.
I was doing the rounds to everybody. Okay, here it is. Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say you dropped something off?
Oh, no, they were, they're like introductory stuff.
Yeah.
That you all have.
That was the day I was going to come to your house, get your signature. I dropped something off at David's house. I dropped something off at Julia's house.
I don't think I ever got this binder. Is it, is it a charting the course binder?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I have.
Okay. So this is what it would look like. You would have, first you put in your name. So we would know who was submitting it. Is it like old business or new business? Mostly it'll be new business, but you might have something like, you know, a follow-up to a policy or something. Describe your agenda item. How would you list it on the agenda? What decision would be needed by the committee?
What if I listed it as number one priority? Is that a violation of?
No, no. Well, no. So then urgent, urgent means, oh my God, call a special meeting. This is something that's urgent, whatever that is. Emergency. High would be, it'd be really great if we could have it on the next meeting. Medium is like, this is something we need to, um, schedule in the next couple of months. And low is like, this is something we need to talk about, um, like at a summer retreat where we're putting together priorities, things like that. Um, and then does this agenda item require information from the central office staff? If so, please describe what it would be. And then any supporting documents or exhibits that you might have. So if it's a policy, like Anna's been really good at putting those things together. You could provide a link here or say, I've emailed them to Janelle or I'll email them to you or, you know, wherever it is. And then once you do that, there will be a response which comes, will come out on this spreadsheet, which will be what you would be shared on. So you would be able to see what it is. And here, like I filled in some dummy stuff to make sure it worked. And so to the side here, I will add the date, which it is scheduled. And then maybe we'll do, um, I'll just write plus one. And if you want to do a plus one, you could just type plus one.
So I'm, I still am a little concerned about the plus one, because that is a tacit way of supporting, like I'm, I, I'm.
It's not, it's not a discussion.
No, I just mean supporting, putting it on the agenda. You're, but Anna, I understand you're concerned that it would look like you are tacitly supporting another committee's.
As long as, as long as we're all okay with that, then that's fine. I think my only, by, and again, you know, I'm just trying to be realistic. I think the proverbial problem is going to be, I think it's medium or high. Michelle, Michelle or the superintendent thinks it's low or not at all. Then what happens?
Then the plus ones come in.
Can we make this document public? Is it going to be public? Can we make this document public? Is it going to be public? But no one can edit it, but everyone can see it?
What do you mean by public? It'll be for us. It'll be public to us. It won't be public to the public.
Well, that is a problem, right? Because at least at the end of, when we do this in person, no, I mean, well, it's a very good idea, but there's also a few holes that need to be filled. I guess is a better way of putting it. By having the conversation at the end, at least the public is aware that someone is bringing up a topic that might be very concerning to them and wish we would speak about. If we take this all offline, we don't have that sort of connection with the public that they know this is something that we're asking for.
We can connect back with Kyle, who's the, who's the chairperson we talked to and see how, I'm sure he has handled this. And they may bring it up in public and it might go to the form, because I don't think we've really asked him that question.
One of the things he told us is that every correspondence they get, they put in their packets and publish. Like every email, every letter, everything. So, um, and then, you know, talking about what the, so we were speaking to him about how we handle that. And he's like, yeah, like I really wish my committee could go with that. And we gave him our reasoning. He's like, I'm going to take that back. So it's helpful, like to talk to other people about how they're problem solving.
Well, I guess one question is.
Same problems because we're all trying to do a job efficiently on volunteer time. So we're trying to problem solve to see the way we can do it back.
Let me ask this question. Is this a problem that needs solving? Like, do you, what is the?
I think so, because all I've been hearing from a lot of people is that their agenda items are not being heard. And then it's like a repository. So then you can say, I've had an agenda item for a month and what is going on? You know, I, I actually think it's, it's good for accountability for the, the chair to see it. But I also think that, um, what if we make it a policy that we have to announce it at the meeting? We have to say, I'm going to send, put this agenda item forward. So that way it's on the record. Mahala can write it down in the notes at the end of the meeting. But then this is just a, this is just more like an administrative thing.
Yeah. But how is that different than sending?
I was thinking, these are all the ones.
Oh, it's backwards.
Since the last meeting.
Well, but from a, from a, so I guess, I mean, for those people who know me well, for me to resist more bureaucracy and paper is going to shock people. But like, I kind of feel like we already have email, right? Like I can voice something in the open meeting. So the public hears what I think is important. I can follow up with an email to the chairs. That is a written documentation. We all have record of it. It's there. To me, it just feels like a little bit of extra work with no actual benefit. And then, you know, theoretically, none of these agenda items should be lingering for three, four, five months. I mean, that really is, I think, counterproductive. So I do applaud the, like, I like the basic idea of sort of building some structure, but I'm a little concerned about the sharing of information outside the public realm. And I don't know that we, I feel like, I feel like it seems redundant in a weird way to me. Like, I just don't know that we actually need this, but.
I just want to, I know where you're coming from, Anna. And, and trust me, I'm actually with you on your concerns. But what do you always sort of, that I hear that you worry about is the, you know, things outside of the public realm. There is a certain amount of work that we need to actually do as a committee. You know what I mean? And, and so I, while I hear what you're saying, you know, I, I think that you, you can't drill into it so much to be like, oh, or hide it. You know, I, I think that the issue is like, okay, well, we want to make sure that people know that this, what we're speaking about, right? The, the agendas themselves are public documents. So the people know what we're going to be discussing. I like the idea of the accountability that this creates. I don't think this is the appropriate time that should be, should have been brought up personally, but I, uh, you know, I, I do think, I think it's a good idea. Excuse me?
I did mean to bring it up during my chair's report, but I forgot. I'm sorry.
It gets, um, because I think it's a good plan. That's not quite there yet. And, you know, and, um, because I think it needs to just address, this is what works for them, you know, and however they work, you know what I mean? So like, there's, there's some issues for us personally. I'm like wondering where this is going to live, you know? Like the fact that if there's an emergency meeting, I'm telling you right now, I won't be emailing you. I'll be like texting you.
I know.
You know?
I know.
Beer's on fire. And right, you know, and so, um, like, but I, I mean, I, I see where you're saying, I, but like in, in, you know, what I want to, what I want to say, and I hope I didn't come out wrong, is that like, you know, like I, I just want sort of, you know, Anna and Julia and those who aren't like as familiar and Dana is familiar with the system yet. That, that it is okay for us to actually do some work that isn't like right here in front of all seven of us. In fact, that's the only way we're actually going to get anything done. You know, and, and you know, most of the research we do isn't here, right in front of other people. Is, so, so that is okay. You know, it's the, 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 the worry isn't that, you know, hey, this is an agenda item that I think needs to go on. And like, oh yeah, you know what? I was thinking the same thing. That's not, you know, if that happened in the email, that happened, whatever. That's not in any, any ways of a violation, something you need to worry about. So I wouldn't worry about those like plus ones. You know, it's that getting into the thick of it, like, oh yes, this, you know, I think it's a good idea because of this. Then you start, you know, going over that, over that line of an open meeting law, right? And so, excuse me, but I, I don't think, you know, I want to say like that. The, the way that was just laid out right there, I, I don't think that we have to worry about that much, but you never know. If you leave it open note section, what could happen?
I mean, I'm willing to try it. I, 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 you know, I.
Disciplined. Yeah.
Yeah.
I applaud the problem solving.
Like, like I said, where are you guys thinking that this is going to live? Like how, you know what I mean? Like, how are we going to access this?
There'll be a Google drive. So I would email you the link to it. And so maybe we could send it out. You know, like we meet usually on, like if our, if we're going to meet in like two weeks from now, we do the agenda the Monday before the week so that we get things through on Friday. So if we send it to you, you know, the Friday before or something like that. So basically I'm sending it to you tomorrow or the day after for our next meeting.
Are these individuals, like you're sending them off like quizzes or is this one big quiz where it's just going to populate a spreadsheet?
I'll send you the link.
For individual or for?
Forever. This, and you'll be able to.
Same link for everyone forever. And it goes to a form.
Yeah. And you can, you, you would be able to do multiple responses. Unlike a quiz, I'll just let you keep taking it.
So Mahala had a comment, um, what she's been doing in the last few minutes, having the new agenda items that you discussed at a particular meeting, and then a separate carried over agenda items that were brought up previously and still pending to be scheduled follow-up. So there's like multiple avenues of accountability, which I think is good.
We're not getting the minutes in time for the next meeting for them to be.
Right. But at least there's a paper trail somewhere.
Yeah.
Of open, of someone saying this should be on the agenda. I don't know, which doesn't solve the problem of getting it on the immediate agenda.
Shall Mary Beth, myself kind of keep things organized, like as a teacher, right? One of the, I can't do all the organization. It would kill me. So anytime I can have students provide me the information that goes into an organized way, I do it because it allows me more time to do more things. So if instead of me writing things down and then having to follow up and then having to call this person and say, what is this agenda item mean? And it would be easier if we could just put it all in one place so that we all could see it. Dana.
So I guess I want to, before we go to, we spiral too out of control here. What I heard is that there've been, there's been an ongoing discussion and this has been an issue and a concern. What I heard is that Michelle Bailey as the chair is offering a solution. And I've heard concerns, but so far I've heard everybody say, well, I'm willing to try it. I have some concerns about it. So if that's where we are, could we just start with that? Like people have concerns, but people are willing to try it.
Like, I do, I hear what David and Michelle are saying about it being okay. I, I, um, I guess, sure. I mean, there are working documents that are not public. I do feel like it feels like we're doing something in private that we could do in public or, you know, that's fine. I'm willing to try. I'm a little uneasy about it. I still think the underlying tension though, is that what happens if we disagree, you know? And then it, I mean, I, I don't think that question has ever been resolved by this committee this year. So I, I do think that's still outstanding, but I'm, yeah, I'm willing to try. I'm not sure. Again, I don't think it's necessary, but I, if you, if you guys think it would make your life better, I am willing to try. So. Can I ask a couple of questions about?
Tomorrow, I'll send the link tomorrow so that you guys have time. So I'll just make that the practice. I'll send the link the day after our meeting because we're starting to prepare the next agenda for four or five days later. But like four days later. So, yep.
Um, so I have a follow-up on a couple of old agenda items that I haven't heard back from you on. And I, I do want to talk about the, the question we were just talking about, Tom, which I just like, lost my train of thought actually. But I do want to talk through a little bit. Oh, it was about the hiring or volunteerism around testing. Like I do, sounds like we'll have more information on Friday. So I guess I do want to make sure the committee has an opportunity to make a decision if there's a financial component. I feel like that's something, um, the committee really needs to talk about if it's a resource allocation. So I want to keep a pin on that. I would like to put on the agenda at some point, the question of what's going on at the high school and the volume of kids going remote. The new request for them all to come back. Um, and back to my ongoing pursuit of space questions. I still want to revisit the idea of are we using a high school efficiently in terms of space? So I'd like to have a conversation about space at the high school. And then my follow-up questions are somewhat budget related. Two of the things I wanted to talk about a while ago were a DEI audit, which could have a potential allocation as well as intrinsic bias training, which could also have an allocation. And I'm wondering if we're ever going to talk about that in this budget cycle, because if we don't budget for it, it's now we're past. So I haven't heard back from you about when we might talk about those things.
That's correct, which is why we need this. I don't understand the question about the high school that you just asked. So I'm going to need more explanation about that.
Do you want explanation now or later?
Yeah. If you can just put in, you can test.
Here's someone other than me works. That would be great. I could be super excited about my form if it actually works. So, um, all right. So Dana.
Are we ready to move to adjourn?
I am.
All right.
Not midnight.
Okay. Julie wants to stay.
I want to stay.
I move to adjourn at 10:23 PM.
So second, second by David. He's, he's really fast, Julia. So I figured it out. Your video off, you move on the screen. So Peter, you are now in the last position.
Yes, and thank you.
Julia.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, yes. All right. Two weeks was the year.